Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Santa Barbara City Council Meeting of April 11th, 2017 to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mayor Potem Dominguez.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Item one.
Proclamation declaring April as National Poetry Month and appointing poet laureate Enid Osborne for 2017 through 2019.
Great. So, to make it official. Yep. So, we kind of need to vote first, but that's okay. Just, you know, just really want to make it official. So, can I entertain a motion to appoint Enid Osborne as the next poet laureate for a two-year term?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All right. Moved by Mario, second by White. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's unanimous. Now I can... All righty. The city of Santa Barbara is widely recognized as an art center, providing a spiritual home for creative activity and for writers. And the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the value of the Office of Arts and Culture's participation in the Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Competition through a partnership with the California Arts Council, National Endowment for the Arts, and National Poetry Foundation. This program helps local high school students master public speaking, build self-confidence, and learn about their literary heritage. And since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designated April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets and increase visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our communities and culture. And the city of Santa Barbara, recognizing the value of poetry, established a poet laureate position in 2005 to honor local literary excellence and the spoken word by utilizing poetry to celebrate and elevate community events. And the city of Santa Barbara hereby appoints Enid Osborne as the 2017 to 2019 poet laureate to steward appreciation of poetry and the written word in the community through events and programs at the Santa Barbara Public Library and elsewhere throughout April and the ensuing two-year appointment. So now therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as National Poetry Month and congratulate Santa Barbara's newest poet laureate, Enid Osborne. And congratulate... I think you get to get crowned first before you speak. So there you go.
So have the distinct honor of presenting the crowning of our laureate. In the name of poetry. This beautiful crown was made by our dear friend Peg Quinn, another poet. And we poet laureates are so happy to have you join our group, our collective. But you, for the moment, will be the queen poet. And here is your scepter, Ms. Queen. And you also, with all of the businessness, and Santa Barbara is one of those places where they have a lot of parades, and I think for the parade, you need a baton. Let's get this untangled. You can use this. So this is really called passing the baton. Thank you. And we have one more gift for you, which is, it's passed down from a long line of poets laureate, the red phone. And this one has all of the previous poet laureates' numbers. So call us for anything you wish to have known. Thank you. It has... Hello. This is amazing. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
So just as they're sitting down to acknowledge our past poets laureate, David Starkey, Chris Yost, Sojourner Kin Kingroll, and Perry Longard. So, and I know Paul Willis couldn't be with us today, and we know that Barry Spax is with us all the time. So that's, thank you for being here today. The podium's yours.
Thank you so much. This is a great honor. I'm a little giddy, a little excited, but I wanted to thank you, Mayor Schneider, for being such an arts-loving mayor. We've really enjoyed you so much. And I want to thank the city council, the Office of Arts and Culture, the Arts Council, and the selection committee for this appointment. And I am honored by this opportunity to serve the city, the poets, and poetry. Sarah York Rubin at the Office of Arts and Culture and Jace Turner at the Santa Barbara Public Library for their friendliness and guidance in the onboarding process. My dear friends, colleagues, and supporters in the community, I am honored to represent our fine community of poets, and I'm very proud of all of us today. I thank our previous laureates for their commitment, generous service, and shining example. I am proud of you, proud to join your ranks. Now more than ever, I will be looking to you for guidance. My talented and loving husband, Jay Scheideman, who has supported me in every way imaginable so that I could do this work. My mother, the English major, for encouraging me in the arts. And my father, the senator, for his example as a passionate public servant. Big Yes Press for publishing my book, When the Big Wind Comes, and two of my publishers are here today. And I want to thank my employers at Fielding Graduate University and the last several places of employment for hanging in there with my unconventional hours and commitments. I very much look forward to engaging with the city and county in this work and hope to serve, inspire, exhort, and represent poetry in the community of poets who are so dear to me. The poem I brought to share is an ars poetica that tells a story in metaphor, of course, about becoming a poet. This is titled "Call Me Poet." It seems so strange to have my back to all of you.
That's all right. They can see you on TV later, because otherwise, it's all good.
Okay. "Call Me Poet." Greetings and greetings. My wings are weary of beating the long flight to this ledge with a view, to be here with you, to be named. Call me poet if it's all the same. It is the only title one needs, titles being somehow the antithesis of what it is we do, of a calling so base. It's true, I did not arrive at this lofty place by flying, but by falling. And it was a fall from grace. Came down with meteor force to make my crater, meet my creator. Make no mistake, it was a kind of death, or a gift I could have, could not have asked for or described. It freed me, as a pariah is free. And I packed my scraps into a wagon and was gone, a fresh vagabond. I traveled wild, unbroken paths to the towns where poets would have me at their tables. We ate, we swapped fables and lies. These did not care, my heart was broken or blackened, but examined tattoo and scar and nodded wisely over my story, unhorrified. I did not start a new life then, but as one who has lost all and takes a vow at the edge of waking, I went up to the podium when called, empty as I was and breaking, still breaking, never to be whole. And that little wood became my home, my circle of safety, my spot where no harm could touch me, where I could say the beautiful, the holy, the hideous truths. As I traveled, I was often called to witness as a second-generation, wholly-talking prophet, not just a reciter of the written word, but a conduit for the voices of barking fox, waterfall, neon, lonely railway, fence post, eucalyptus, and the songs of prairie grass in the night. And to say something of light, its glory, touching us like memory long after. And inasmuch as I was faithful to these songs, such was the measure of my joy. Oh, call me poet, for no other name will stick to me, I swear. And the garland even now is falling from my hair, just as night must fall and dust and these words must, and all things beautiful. Thank you.
We look forward to two years of your wisdom, and our next item actually is where a lot of this can all happen, right? So if you could read item number two.
National Library Week, April 9th through 15th, 2017.
Great. Welcome. Libraries in Santa Barbara and across the country play a vital role in supporting the quality of life in our communities, placing importance not only on what they have for the people, but what can be done for and with the people. And libraries support and foster literacy, support democracy, and effect social change through a commitment to provide equitable access to information for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And libraries and librarians are turning outward and looking beyond their traditional roles, providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new services that connect closely with community needs. And libraries and librarians open a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, makerspaces, job-seeking resources, the power of reading, and access to technology and information that bolster the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. Libraries work to serve all community members, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, and the most vulnerable in our community, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim April 9th through 15th as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library, engage with your librarian, and because of you and our experts in the library, the libraries transform. And thank you both for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Christina Hernandez, Senior Librarian for Santa Barbara Public Library, and I'm here with Jace Turner, our Community Relations Librarian. And I am pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Santa Barbara Public Library. National Library Week is currently being celebrated across the country this week, honoring the work that libraries do in their community. And I know, I can speak for our library staff, they are so very proud to serve this community and so passionate about the work that libraries do and passionate about the services that we provide. We are also very excited about the contributions that we hope to continue to make in the future. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And one more ceremonial item, number three, if you could read that.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, each month, I like to recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their service to the city, so I'd like to read some names into the record. There are no employees here to receive their pins in person. With five years of service to the city, Oscar Cornejo, Water Distribution Operator II, Public Works Department; Oscar Corral, Police Officer, Police Department; and Andrew Wilson, Water Distribution Operator Technician II at the Public Works Department. With 10 years of service, Maria Hernandez, Accounting Assistant, Public Works Department. With 15 years of service, Kenneth Ficklin, Streets Maintenance Worker II, Public Works Department. With 20 years of service, Rebecca Fribley, Senior Property Management Specialist at the airport; Jan Martinez, Harbor Patrol Officer with the Water Department. With 25 years of service, Linda Allen, Administrative Specialist with the Finance Department; and with 30 years of service to the city, Stella Balboa, Administrative Specialist, Public Works Department; and Olivia White, Administrative Specialist with the Police Department.
Well, congratulations to all. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I have a few speaker slips here and two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Peter Marin. And Catherine, are you giving your two minutes? Yep. Okay. So Peter, you have up to four minutes, and then Bob Mayo and Phil Walker.
In honor of Poetry Month, I have something for you. There once was a man with a cane, who to City Hall came in pain. There was nowhere to rest, so he did his best to complain and complain and complain. Okay. Now, point is, I have a cane, I have a bad leg. When I come to City Hall, there really is no place to rest or sit. There's no benches outside on the green, there's no benches on the porch. There are benches upstairs in the patio, but they're not to be used. The door's for emergency only, and if you go outside on the patio, you can't cut back in because the door locks. When I was here two weeks ago, I had to ask somebody in an office to bring a chair out to the hallway to sit. This may or may not be an ADA issue, but certainly it's a courtesy issue because it discourages elderly people, it discourages people with emphysema, with bad legs, with arthritis, all kinds of people coming to the City Hall, and it makes it very difficult to make one's way up here and talk to you, and at the same time, meet people in the hall or stand there or talk to them or act politically in a normal way. So my request to you is to somehow provide seating during council days outside and downstairs so people who have troubles similar to mine are not discouraged from coming and expressing themselves. City Hall should be a place that is open to and invites all people. We all understand that. You understand that as well as I do, but it's not. And it could be without much trouble. So my request and suggestion is you somehow figure out a place for people to sit when they come here so they can rest and present their case when they have time to do it. All right? That's the first thing. Second thing is, we have asked one of the council members and also written to the city attorney and to the chief of police, asking for a meeting so we can discuss the towing practices in relation to RVs, which are not clear to us at the moment, right? They don't seem to involve warnings given. People are not clear about when their vehicle time is up for 72 hours and when they will be towed. We get serious and repetitive complaints from people claiming that they've moved their vehicle, but they're treated as if they hadn't moved the vehicle, very often because they park in a place close to the original place. We have no idea what means the police use to ascertain that a vehicle has been 72 consecutive hours in the same place, likely because it can't be observed for 72 hours. So we need to, I don't think they put paper clips on tires anymore. It's foolish because people take the tire clips off. So what do they do to make sure a vehicle has actually been somewhere 72 hours, not been driven away and then driven back? We advise people not to drive back to the same place, but they repeatedly do it. That doesn't mean they've broken a law. Now, I know, as you know, that years ago, the city interpreted excessive number, the police interpreted excessive number to mean one, and then the city attorney got that changed to two, although he suggested three. At the same time, I went around and read the ordinance very carefully about towing, found out that the city was supposed to post the towing rules and regulations at every salvage yard, but it hadn't been done. We also found out that the police were supposed to inform people about their rights to a hearing and how they could get their possessions from a vehicle, but nobody at that time knew that. Now, that's been fixed because we went and talked to the city attorney and he fixed it. But what I mean to say is inadvertently, or perhaps intentionally, I would never say, and all of this was before the present chief was here, certain kinds of discrepancies and perhaps violations crept into police behavior, and we just want to make sure that they're not going on now. We would much prefer to do this without going to court or doing this or doing that.
Thank you very much.
So we would very much like to sit down with the chief and the city attorney and have a conversation about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mayo, sorry, and then Phil Walker.
Madam Mayor, City Council, one of the nicest things Santa Barbara's built in the last few years has been the Bridge of Mission Creek, and everybody's really enjoying it right now, and it's going to be torn down in a week or two or three. And the Coastal Commission demanded that it be temporary, but it relieves so much pressure down on one of the busiest places in town. You come off of the pier, you swing right, and you go down behind the skateboards, off to East Beach, and you don't have to compress onto Cabrillo Boulevard. Once the bridge taken out, everybody's going to be shot back to the street. And I am asking for a traffic study for the next year to delay the Coastal Commission and say, let us take a hard look at this. We think we have an asset, not a negative here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil Walker, then Demetriya Pope, and then Greg Brown.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This Sunday's editorials, voices, Mr. Joshua Hagmark, I felt was a target of unwarranted criticism vis-à-vis the water status. And, you know, I worked through both droughts, and it was heads above handled during this time, and the drought ain't quite over yet, and our groundwater basins are severely tapped. They need a long rest. So some of the costs that Mr. Glenn Maurer threw out, I'm sure Mr. Hagmark would love in the city council too, to purchase water for 150 bucks an acre feet. I can't figure that one out, where he got some of the costs attributed to this article. Also, you know, the D-South Plan is the best insurance on this side of the south coast of the San Inez Mountains. Walking through it, if you have an impact on the Teckalote Tunnel, if that's obstructed, the coastal branch, state water, if you have a problem with that, it cuts right across the San Andreas Rift Zone. State Water Project and what's going on at Oroville Dam and Reservoir, that's a sad state of a lack of asset management, and that should not have happened. And there is going to be, from what I've heard, a Senate investigation of the whole cascading trail of tears. Thank you very much.
Demetriya Pope? Come on up.
Hi. My name's Demetriya Pope. I'm born and raised in Santa Barbara, and I came back recently to retire and to bring a program that I've been running for some years in Florida for delinquent youth. And we come across the problem at Ortega Park. And Craig Gilbert is my first cousin. It's an embarrassment to the family. It's a nightmare. And I was just curious, what could I do as a team with the police department, with the city, as a concerted effort to just start having fun in the park again and using the park for a park? Our hope was to do a campaign called Upward Ortega, where I reach out to different nonprofits, different groups and organizations to get on the calendar, to just start bringing things into the park and events, to be able to rent the welcome center, to use it daily, to get them gone. I've been going over there crying and begging and pleading and recording them having overdoses in the park, and it's... It's it, I guess.
Well, thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez. Ms. Pope, there's a question for you.
So I believe we met at the park a few weeks ago. You were coming in to do a visit, and I'm glad you're here today, and I saw a CC of an email you sent to the police department that you're ruling to work, so I'm really hopeful. As you know, Craig Gilbert has been in the news, he's been in The Independent, he's been on KEYT, and I think it's critical that we figure out how he can be, how we can deal with this issue in the park, because it's not serving our community at this point. It's more of a liability and an asset. So I'm glad you're here, and I hope you stay and keep working with us. So we'll stay in touch. So thank you.
It's a promise.
Thank you. Greg Brown will be the final speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. With the Vietnam Veterans of America, we'd like to do a memorial to the Vietnam soldiers. We're all getting older now, as you can imagine, and we'd like to start a memorial at the airport because we actually have a helicopter, a Huey, right out of that area. And so far, we've been working with Sarah Rubin from the Arts Commission to get us an idea of how to put the thing together, and also Hazel Jones from the airport director. And basically, I need to know if you could assign me a council member, since there is none for District Five.
We do have a council member liaison to the airport commission, so I forget, is that you, Mr. Hotchkiss? And you're also the council liaison to the Arts Advisory Committee, so there's your guy.
Are you a Vietnam veteran? Oh, you are. Wonderful.
There you go.
We can discuss things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comments. On to the consent calendar, and there's some items to read.
Item four, reauthorization of public educational and governmental access fees and establishing a schedule of penalties for state-franchised video service providers. Recommendation, the council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of Title Only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, reauthorizing a fee for public educational and government access purposes on state video franchise holders within the city of Santa Barbara. Adopt by reading of Title Only a resolution of the city of Santa Barbara rescinding Resolution Number 13-049 entitled Establishing a Public Education and Government Access Fee on State Franchise Video Service Providers for Use in Providing Public Educational and Government Access Video Services, effective May 17, 2017. And adopt by reading of Title Only a resolution of the city council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing a schedule of penalties for state franchised video service providers that breach customer service and privacy standards.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. There's a speaker, speaker slips for item 16. If you could just read the title of that again.
Notice of intent to adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire real property interest for the De La Guerra Street Bridge Replacement Project. The council adopt by reading of Title Let council adopt by reading of Title Only unless a timely request for hearing is received, a resolution of necessity of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to acquire real property rights on the property commonly known as the De La Guerra Square Owners Association located at 314, 316, and 318 West De La Guerra Street.
Thank you. Mr. Plou, Topplou, and then Sally Bromfield, I think, come on up, and you have two minutes there at the podium, and I appreciate your time. Good afternoon.
Members of the council, I'm Topplou. The item that is before you is to enable the city to replace the bridge that's about 100 years old at De La Guerra Street. Mission Creek flows right past that site. And about 30 years ago, I appeared back before the council and Mayor Lodge, I guess it was at that point, to get permission and approval from the city to essentially construct a project there, a nine-townhouse project that would meet 100-year flood standards. And so in doing that, we built a wall along Mission Creek to protect the property and then raise the elevation of the building pads such that none of the units there would flood. The big problem is, is that the bridge there actually constricts water, and that in a 100-year flood event, which we did a computer model on way back when, and apparently is still pretty accurate after talking to engineers, you have what's called the pressure flow, so that you, you have water actually going over the bridge, and that would still occur with the new bridge that would be there. The difference being is that this bridge would be longer and a little bit, a little bit higher as far as the railing, because you have to meet new building standards. The bridge is fine. The problem is, the city wants an easement on the property to do construction, and they would also be doing demolition of the bridge adjacent to this concrete wall. The wall would abut into the bridge. They would make arrangements to do that. In order to do this project, however, the city, under the current contract, is asking us to assume liability for title and up till a few days ago for even any damage that would occur to the wall during construction. I think we're resolving that issue, but I'll throw a couple more at you. We have to disclose any of this because the term of this contract will run until 2023. So if anybody's going to be selling a unit there, this is, contract is going to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb by any real estate attorney before they advise a person that it's okay to build that. Construction is going to take about a year minimum. It could run as long as two years. And so in this contract, I've asked that the city establish a drop-dead date of 24 months, period.
Almost at three minutes here, so...
Let me wind this up. The city's also asking us to indemnify them against any potential title defects, to which I say, if nine people have bought units there and have also sold them, the city should satisfy themselves that title's okay. If they're to leave any equipment in the creek, or forms, or other concrete construction materials, as happened down by the station in January when the county was doing a flood control area, it's liable to cause flooding on our property because water would back up. That's the only outlet that it has.
Okay, you do need to wind up, please.
To give you an idea, in 1995, we had a 100-year-plus event. The water was two feet above the road, and we ended up with about 18 inches of debris and silt. So this is not an uncommon thing, and we'd like to be made whole and have the city essentially indemnify us to that. At this point, they've been unwilling to do so, and we've gone back and forth with this contract over a couple of weeks.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question for you, Mr. Plou.
Yes, please.
Is that the extent of your request, the indemnification?
Yes. We're not fighting over money. Money's not the issue. Indemnification and risk. In other words, if you want to build a project and you come to me with it, fine, I don't have a problem with that. You just assume the risk for construction of that project. If there are lawsuits, if there are liens that are filed, that's between the city and their contractor, and I should have no part of that. So at the very least, I'd like you to advise your city attorney to address these issues specifically, because the draft I got back yesterday at 3:30 not only ignored these, it scratched out the suggestions that I'd made.
Thank you.
No, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Where do you go from here?
Well, as I understand right now, by your action today, this would allow the city to go ahead with its right-of-way activity. I would at least like to have some instruction that these issues get addressed if we're going to do this expeditiously, because I'd rather not go hire one of your former city attorneys to go sort this out. I mean, I had experience doing this, but I don't think it's in anybody's best interest to go there. It's basically a liability, Mr. Hotchkiss. That's what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also, some other lights came on. Mr. Hart and then Ms. Mario.
Well, I, the question is for the city attorney then to respond to the questions.
Good. Ms. Ostringer, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, I'm Congresswoman Hart, Ms. Ostringer, Assistant City Attorney. Before I address some of Mr. Plou's comments, I just wanted to remind the council that what we're here to do...
Now it's on.
What we're here to do today is just the first step in an eminent domain process. This is just the passing of a resolution of necessity where we're asking council to make four findings surrounding the necessity to take what is essentially a temporary construction easement that will allow the city's contractor to access the bridge project. What council needs to do today is determine that the public interest and necessity require the project, that the project is located in a manner that is most compatible to the public good and least, provides least injury to private property, and that the property described, in this case, a temporary construction easement, is necessary for the project, and that the city has made the offer and the appraisal available to the property owners. And what, and Mr. Owaziac can speak more to those with regards to necessity, but I can tell you that the appraisals were made available to the property owner. The property owners were properly noticed. With regards to the questions with respect to liability, we have been negotiating a temporary construction easement with the property owners, which is, are cumulatively represented by the De La Guerra Homeowners Association, and we will continue to do that if this resolution of necessity is passed. This, like I said, is just the first step. There are some issues that can go back and forth, and we haven't got to indemnity, and I will have, will continue to negotiate with the homeowners.
So the decision seems very limited in scope, but these issues are outstanding and need to be resolved, and you're committing to working through those, and there will be another opportunity in front of council before this would get to litigation for us to weigh in. Is that what you're telling me?
No, that's not, not quite accurate. Yes, we will continue to negotiate. We may need to file a action and condemnation, and this is your authorization for us to go ahead and do that.
Well, I guess just, you want other people to weigh in on questions?
Go ahead.
I'm not really comfortable with that kind of blanket authority. I think we're going to get there. It sounds from Mr. Plou that there, you know, we're very close, but this is here today and this is sort of our opportunity, I guess, to weigh in, and I'd like to see us, you know, bridge this gap. I don't understand, the way it's presented to us, haven't heard differently from council, is that we're asking this adjacent property owner to take responsibility and liability for this work city is going to do, and that doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm...
Mr. Collin, did you want to...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I think the sequence of this is a little confusing, but this is the same procedure we've followed dozens, if not hundreds, of times. The issue being raised is a question, if you look at indemnification or risk as a dollar proposition, that's a function of compensation, and Mr. Plou is entitled to just compensation for his property, and if he's not satisfied with what the city ultimately offers, he can go to court, and if he's correct, the city pays his attorney's fees as well. So the law is set up to amply protect his property interests. What you're really doing is giving us the go-ahead to institute that process. You're not passing on whether or not the city should back down or stay firm on indemnification. Ultimately, that valuation kind of function is a court's job, if we get there, but I seriously doubt we'll get there. So I would advise approving the resolution. If you would like us to come back before we file anything, we can certainly do that. We have the authority to bring a closed session, so that would be something I'd be happy to do with or without council action directing it.
Well, that would help alleviate my concerns, just having that step.
No, not, hold on, no, not yet. Ms. Mario, and we have some other questions first.
So, Mr. Collin, did I hear you correctly say you're encouraging us to pass the resolution? Is that what I heard you say?
I wouldn't say I'm encouraging you. That's, that's your choice. The question here is, does the city need this property for an appropriate reason? And I think the answer is clearly yes, but that's an evidentiary finding. The concerns being raised by the property owner have to do with compensation, and the conditions of the compensation that he's objecting to do affect value. The cost of indemnification and the various risks do affect value. So we will have to deal with that as a matter of constitutional and statutory law. So I do think this is the right first step. It's within the council's discretion whether to do it or not.
Very good. And so, Mr. Owaziac, there's a timeframe for construction here, I understand, so this, you're, you're asking us to approve the resolution now because construction is supposed to start in a timely manner?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, construction is actually scheduled for 2019. However, what is important to recognize is that we are finalizing the design of the project, and we have existing contracts with the designers and their subconsultants and other entities. So we're, what we're trying to do is minimize the expense of the project, the city's expense, because it's an 88 and 1/2 percent grant-funded project with an 11 and 1/2 percent city match. So the longer the design contract goes on, the more expense is incurred, and so the, this easement acquisition is part of the right-of-way phase of the project. And so once we obtain the, the rights for the easement, then we can finalize the right-of-way portion and enter into the next phase of the contract, which is construction. Now, we do need to get in line for the construction funding, so that's driving us to be sooner than later on this issue, which is cost, trying to minimize and costs, and we're also trying to get in line for the future construction. So we actually are scheduled or planning for this bridge to be constructed in 2000, the spring of 2019, which is two years from now.
So what I'm hearing is, is that this project is a benefit to the public, to the natural environment, and that there's a timeliness here. So I would be in support of staff recommendation, and it does sound like something might come back to us if that would satisfy Councilmember Hart.
We do have another speaker before anyone makes any motions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And, and if, hold on, we still have some lights on for some questions, and if someone has, wants you to make a comment as well, you can, they can ask for that. So Mr. Rouse, and Mr. Dominguez, and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Plou, you, you mentioned something about receiving materials yesterday afternoon or whatever. Is that material to what you have to say today? Is that...
Yes.
Did something change in the deal per those materials?
I have a draft of a contract that came back yesterday from the city attorney's office via engineering that essentially did not address any of the points that I sent back to the city last Wednesday in a draft. And the claim was made that the city, city attorney was too, too busy or out of town or whatever, that they couldn't get back that quickly. The point I'm trying to make is that $4,000 is gone in a heartbeat as soon as we get into any sort of legal challenge here. Second of all, as soon as you get this into the legal realm, I can't talk to any one of you at this point, because then it becomes legal and it's only lawyers, so the clock's ticking, and I'm spending a lot more money than I am right now. These are not unreasonable. In fact, John and I felt as though we came to sort of a head of agreement last, last Wednesday over this. He understood the concerns. That got all swept aside as of yesterday. So my concern is that we're going to get into loggerheads with attorneys. It's going to end up costing everybody a lot of money, particularly the owners of the, of these properties, and we're not going to get any farther down the road. And so I think by sending a message that, hey, we're not quite there, I'm not looking to stop this bridge, but that we're not quite there, give us more time so that we can at least negotiate calmly, rather than do lawyer to lawyer as it would appear that what we're heading if you pass this resolution today.
So what you're saying is we weren't responsive to what you'd asked, is that...
Not at all. In other words, I still assume all liability for even title of the property at this point. Anybody who would propose a project like this in the private sector would be charged themselves to go out and get title insurance to satisfy whatever liability they might have for whatever activity they were undertaking. It shouldn't be placed upon the property owner to be responsible for that. It's not our bridge.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, he said, he mentioned something about you'd come back to us before you file, was the word you used. File what?
The resolution before you really does two things. It's your determination that we need this land for flood control. That has nothing to do with any of the testimony you've heard today. So the evidence presented in the staff report is uncontroverted by the comments you've heard today. The second thing the resolution does, as Ms. Ostringer said, is it authorizes us to file lawsuit in order to condemn the property if we have to do that. And so what I'm saying is that's a step that we can come back and consult with you on before we do it. That's not something we do lightly, because the city ultimately bears the expense for that. So I, I think our interests are aligned with Mr. Plou about avoiding litigation, but the fact is, we're represented. I can't help that. That's my job. So we are doing a process that looks like every other easement acquisition we've done up and down these flood channels to protect the public. And again, the question before you today is, do we need the land for flood control or not? If you don't think so, you would vote no. If you do think so, you would vote yes, and the Constitution and the state law will protect the interests of this property owner.
Well, I'm a little bit of the yes-but mind right now. What recourse would Mr. Plou have if he had problems of liability of which he's afraid?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, are you referring to the, the state of the title on the property?
Any of it. He's just talking about liabilities. So if he, if he suffers damage for, for some reason, loss for an unforeseen liability but nevertheless existing, what recourse does he have, or is he stuck with the bill?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I can't answer that question that way. It's very fact-specific. If you're asking, are we promising that his property will never suffer flood damage? The answer is no. If you're asking, are we looking for assurance that he has title? Apparently, the answer is yes. Ms. Ostringer could address that in greater detail if you will. So I, I don't mean to be evasive, but I simply can't answer those kinds of detailed questions about what if, and what his recourse would be if that what-if occurred.
Okay. Well, I see, the way I feel, see, this is that the city sounds a little heavy-handed, and we're close to an agreement. It's just basically a paper agreement, and I would suggest we ought to keep working on it before we move forward in any form.
Can we hear from the final speaker before we opine on the matter?
Sure.
Did you have a, did you have a question, Mr. White? No? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Plou. Let's, let's have, is it Bromfield?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me. There, there is a piece of that that warrants a legal response. Councilmember Hotchkiss is absolutely correct. Eminent domain is heavy-handed. That's why the compensation limits and restricts what the government can do. Where eminent domain has been challenged most critically in my mind is when the government is taking property from one person for the benefit of another. That's not what's happening here. We are looking for a temporary construction easement to build a flood control project. This is not taking something from Mr. Plou to give it to Mrs. Jones. So the, the, Mr. Hotchkiss is correct that this is heavy-handed, but that's why the law so heavily protects Mr. Plou through this process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plou. Is it Blumfield? Ms., I, I don't... Miss -- I don't -- Brownfield, sorry. I couldn't read the handwriting. If you'd like to come on up?
Yes, hello, Madam Mayor.
And you can put the mic down.
Members of the council.
There you go.
Good to see you all. My name is Sally Bromfield, and I just happen to be Tope Plow's wife, for clarity here. We do own the condominium together. One of the nine De La Guerra Square condos is what I'm referring to. I'd also like to address you as an ancient Santa Barbara realtor. I've worked for over thirty-eight years in the business of real estate. And I'd like to tell you that this De La Guerra Bridge access easement, which will now burden the De La Guerra Square Nine condominium properties, will be a real detriment to being able to sell any of the condos for the five years. The easement is to remain on the title documents. So in effect, it is a taking or a partial taking, because should a brave buyer happen to come along and decide to put in an offer, the existence of the future De La Guerra Bridge construction and wording of the city construction easement at present will have to be thoroughly disclosed to any potential buyer of De La Square condos. Most buyers will ask their real estate attorney to review the terms of the easement. And in my seasoned real estate agent opinion, those real estate attorneys will not advise a buyer to accept the terms of an easement, which has not indemnify the condominium owners against the burden of any future required retaining wall repairs caused by the city bridge construction. It must be clearly stated that any and all retaining wall repairs are to be the sole responsibility of the city during the De La Guerra Bridge construction period. That seems only fair. Furthermore, should a severe storm occur, possible future flooding of the condos could occur if construction equipment, vehicles, concrete forms, and construction debris are left sitting in the Mission Creek bed, thus blocking the flow of water so it cannot run smoothly down the creek.
You need to wind up, please.
I do want to just finish my page. I put a lot of effort into this, but it could overflow the banks on the neighborhood condo projects. You, the city, have asked us, the De La Square condominium owners, for this access easement with the threat of imminent domain hanging over our heads. And therefore, you, the city, should indemnify the condominium owners should unforeseen damage occur to their formerly secure property and existing retaining wall. You have to be realistic and put yourselves in the private sector world where there are not government funds available to use to fight and unjust future situation, the city bridge construction damaging the retaining wall or causing flooding, possibly due to negligence and construction equipment left in the creek.
Thank you. You're at three minutes now, so thank you. We understand your concerns.
All right. Well, thank you for understanding a private citizen's concerns.
Thank you. Your time's up. Did you have a question, Mr. Dominguez? No? Okay. If you'd like, your light's on, so. It's to the council now. Thank you. Your light's on. Did you -- yeah, go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
So it's not -- it seems like the issue is not quite as simple as it may have been I don't think we need to decide whether this is heavy-handed or not. What we can decide, I think, easily and deal with this is, can we be less heavy-handed, whether or not this is heavy-handed or medium-handed or light-handed? This process today is premature, in my opinion, in that the parties haven't had a chance to really get to the crux of the issues, and they seem like they're pretty simple routine issues. And I apologize, but if we've done this hundreds of times like this in the past, we've done it wrong hundreds of times. And we had the poets here early, and Emerson said, "A foolish consistency is the hobgoblin of small minds." So we're not going to justify things we're doing to our residents just because we've done it in the past. If there's a path forward that's more efficient for residents and the city government, let's choose that path. But when we pass a resolution that's pushing us down a Fifth Amendment takings road, we should do that as a last resort, not as a middle-of-the-path resort. Unless there's an emergency or some reason for urgency, I think we do this path after we've done a reasonable job of reaching out, because it's costing you guys a lot of time and money to engage in this process. And it's not a threat that we're going to do this. This is just what we will do, so don't see it as a threat. But we shouldn't start marching down that path until we've exhausted the other remedies. It's just not fair.
Mr. Hotchkiss, and then Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Ms. Kimball about this will put a cloud over any kind of sale, not that any sale is anticipated, but it could preclude that. And knowing the way realtors do, they're not dumb. They're going to use this as a means of negotiation. I certainly would. That might not have a drastic effect, but nevertheless would have or could have some effect on the value of the property. So I'm wondering if we postpone for, I don't know, table for a month or something? Does that give us -- I know it puts us in peril, according to Mr. Awaziak, but the time schedule doesn't make things easier. But do you think that would be enough time to go back and try again?
Madam Mayor, Council --
That may be impossible to answer.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, it's not necessarily impossible to answer. There are, under the Civil Code of Procedure, noticing requirements. So we actually have, I think this is the third time we've noticed this, and we've pushed it back at Mr. Plow's request so that we could continue to negotiate. It does require fifteen days' notice to all the property owners. So if it's taken off the agenda or if the resolution isn't passed today, I will need another --
Month.
At least a month to re-notice.
Right. Okay. Well, I think it's, although awkward for the city, commendable that we push this back a little bit again. But Mr. Plow has to understand that if it's not a conclusion successfully reached in that time, his position is going to be considerably weaker.
Right. I would like to point out that we have actually been negotiating, Mr. Awaziak has been negotiating with the property owners for well over six months. And we, while Mr. Plow has admitted that it's not necessarily the necessity of the take, it's just the issues with regards to the compensation and the liability that we have been trying to work out. I apologize if it seemed heavy-handed. We are under a bit of a time crunch when it comes to funding and Caltrans projects. That's why we have been trying to move this along as quickly as possible. The easement that we are taking is not a permanent easement. It's a temporary construction easement that will begin and become effective when the project is ready to start. It would last for a year. It could last an additional year after that, for which the property owners would be compensated for. The easement itself, the reason why it's only $4,000 is that it's limited, it's an ingress egress, basically, easement. It's just to get to, so our contractor and the homeowners can get to their own buildings so we can complete the project.
Thank you. Mr. -- go ahead.
All of what you're saying sounds reasonable, yet the other side doesn't think so. So I'd still like us to try to work this out better than we have so far. I don't know what my colleagues think.
Mr. Klon, did you have something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I did hear, and in response, further response to Mr. Hotchkiss, I did hear some of the what-ifs from Ms. Bromfield. And the -- if the project is designed in a way that damages their property, there is also a constitutional remedy. It's called inverse condemnation. You're very familiar with that from the canal slide. So there are remedies for this property owner should any of these horribles happen. I need to slightly correct Ms. Ostringer. We have no apology to offer for what we've done here. We have followed state law precisely. We've followed the Constitution precisely. I mentioned that condemnation is heavy-handed, because it is a direct taking of property. But that heavy hand of government is strictly constrained by the Constitution. All of us, those of you on the dais and us down here, took an oath to uphold that Constitution, and that's what we're doing. So the question here is, do we need the land for this flood control project? You're not being charged today with determining that your adequate compensation is being paid. That's not the issue. The question is whether we need the land for flood control. So finally, the statute requires a supermajority vote. So it takes two-thirds of you to find a basis for taking property. That's an additional protection that's baked into it.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Actually, did Mr. White have some questions? Because I'd be interested in knowing. Yeah, I'd rather you go ahead.
Well, I'll make a statement, and that is, the notion of the indemnification certainly rings for me. It would, I mean, the non-lawyerly but real estate-oriented person's perspective is, this sounds like an issue that could be worked out. I mean, that's what I think you're getting, the drift you're getting from everybody, and that it's not. And then, at the same time, I'm very sympathetic to meeting a deadline on these grants for the bridges. The bridges have been the, if not the, I think it's the biggest infrastructure investment that we've had in the streets, anyway, over the last five to ten years, and we like that to continue. So I'm looking for that sweet spot of lowering anxiety on the -- and yet, we're talking about a $5,000, we're not talking about a $500,000 deal here. We're talking about small potatoes, and the owners are being, are obviously involved in this process, using up most of $5,000 worth of time themselves, and to say nothing of our own staff. So I'd like to see us get closer to a happy place on that indemnification issue. At the same time, I really, I feel like we're in a little bit of a pinch here. I don't know what the deadline is for this grant, you know, for this grant season or whatever, and that might be worth knowing. What are we up against there before we lose this year's cycle of granting?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we are not in jeopardy of losing the grant for this term. So that isn't the driving factor here. As I mentioned before, the driving factor is, is that we have existing contracts that are required to remain open, and we cannot finalize our construction drawings until we complete the right-of-way phase. Getting through this right-of-way resolution of necessity allows us to get possession of the easement and finalize the right-of-way phase, which allows us to finalize the construction. And again, staff's view of that is that we would prefer that to be sooner than later, because there are additional costs that can occur if construction, if design contracts continue to linger.
Well, then, just in broad sense, I join those that are concerned about the private party's concern on indemnification. It sounds like a reasonable request in the context particularly of this being a $5,000 issue and not a much bigger one, where lawyers would kind of more automatically get involved.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I agree with my council colleagues. I just think, you know, it seems to me like if you, if I had to vote today on the right-of-way necessity, the facts are simple that we should, I would vote yes. But I would prefer that this just be pulled off the agenda, and we have time to work this out, because I think it's this close. And it sounds to me like everybody was busy. There was just not a meeting of minds. Mr. Awaziak agreed with Mr. Plow. These additional legal issues got added in at the end to protect the city. Those need to be worked through. The Plows are not looking for money. They're looking for liability containment. That may be something that we can't do. I don't totally understand the parameters of that, and we're talking in code here. So I just think it'd be simpler just to take this off, have those issues worked through. If in a month we're not resolved, we'll be back here. I'll vote for the resolution of necessity.
Would you like to make a motion to that?
And I'll make a motion to delay this for a month.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that the speakers are protecting their own financial interests, but I'm here protecting the public interest and the public treasury and the taxpayer dollars. It was clear to me that Mr. Awaziak said this is a matter of containing design costs. Mr. Klon is clear as a bell that we're within the parameters of just moving it forward in terms of, we do need the easement for the bridge. And we need it for flood control. It's an old bridge. This is a public safety issue. It's flooding. It's traffic circulation. And apparently, there's been negotiations going on for six months. I trust that our legal counsel and our public work staff have done everything right in this instance, and also in all the other bridge projects that we've been doing for years. So I'll be voting no, with all due respect. It looks like there's, you've persuaded the rest of the council. I just want the public to know that I'm ready to go ahead with the process to replace this bridge. It's a necessary project. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
I think that's the argument the CEO for United Airlines made last night. We're within our legal rights to do this. And I'm not going to go on record saying just because we can, we should. And I've taught Fifth Amendment law several times, so I'm pretty clear that this is legal. But that doesn't mean we should do it. You can't justify, you can't save your private residents in the name of the public good. Your public is a bunch of private residents. So you really have to balance the two tensions here. And here, where it sounds like we took six months to negotiate, something broke down in the process. I mean, we heard from Mr. Hotchkiss a little about the real estate and how this works, but this is a simple, at the end of the day, a pretty simple real estate transaction of a small scale. The fact that it's taken six months means a couple of things potentially. Either we weren't responding quickly enough, they weren't responding quickly enough, or someone's just being obstinate. And since we didn't hear that today, it's hard for us to figure out whether it was a person or a process that broke down. But this process should be as simple as possible. And it sounds like there were a couple of simple issues that weren't addressed, like what happens if a tractor breaks down in the creek and it floods? Why would they be held responsible? So that's something that five and a half months ago, they should have gotten a clean understanding of why either they are forced to bear that because of the law, or a clean answer that, no, they're not going to be forced to bear it. So when a private resident is left with doubt about why they're going to be forced to pay for damages from a city's mistake, to me, we haven't done a clear enough job of explaining in this negotiation.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, just quickly, when we say on the city side, well, there's always recourse to the courts, which is sort of what we're saying. I don't think that's a very good response. So, but as I said, in four weeks, it's going to look very different unless you've really made some progress. So your argument will be weaker then, for sure.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I hearken to a process that I actually had some concerns about, but it certainly showed a different side of the city when it comes to the bridges. And that is the, I'll call it the lobster house property, the Castagnola restaurant property, where that went through literally, and I thought, too many years and perhaps too much bending over, flexing. But nonetheless, it's a deal, a very complicated deal was made down there. Of course, that was millions of dollars at stake, not 5,000. But nonetheless, it was a big effort to come to a collaboration with a private landowner. So this is a little collaboration needed here, and I hope that we can continue in that tradition with this effort. And I agree with Mr. Hotchkiss, too, that, all right, if this is a shot, and yet, if the obstinacy is coming from the private sector folks, then we want to know about that, want staff to, in their nicest way possible, to share that. But we, I would certainly like to see this be something where everybody's nodding their head and going, okay, now we've got a $5,000 deal. Thank you.
I'll just add that I think the whole purpose of doing this is to create a bridge that can have better flood capacity and reduce flooding for the whole neighborhood, which ultimately will help the property owners all throughout the place. And you said yourself, Mr. Plow, it's not the bridge that you have a concern with. In fact, we've seen just recently with the new bridges downstream on Mission Creek, that the recent rainstorm in the new bridges actually helped reduce the flooding in Lower State Street. So we know it's a good project. Just sounds like we're just not quite there yet. And if it takes four weeks to come to a meeting of the minds and figuring out, then let's get this good project done. It doesn't sound like it's going to ruin or threaten funding. So I would much rather everyone come together, if we can, and try to work something out in the next four weeks. And like Mr. Hart said, if the same thing comes back four weeks later and nothing's changed, then we'll have to make a decision at that point. But at least, we've heard for the first time now that there was this issue. And so I think it's an appropriate thing for us to say, let's just try one more time, even though you've been at it for six months. Hopefully, just a little more will make it work. So I'll be okay with voting for the motion. Any other questions on the motion? Okay.
Could we repeat the motion, please?
So the motion is just to table this item, well, for a month, and I guess work with staff on which exact Tuesday it'll come back. But, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that's six one with Mario opposed. Okay, that's 6-1 with Murillo opposed. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar? Moved by Hart, seconded by White, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, report from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance committee met today to consider bringing back the signed committee, which had been put in advance during other financial times, and we'll have a full committee status, but as opposed to being five members, it will now be three members in order to fill it quicker. We already have two of the members present that have stayed on, so. We voted 2 to 0, Mr. Opshers was absent, to bring that back to council.
Okay, thank you. We have some closed sessions. Yep?
Conference with City Attorney, anticipated litigation. Conference with City Attorney, pending litigation. And conference with Real Property Negotiators.
Madam Mayor, we either need to read the items fully or identify the agenda number that goes with them.
Okay. Take two.
The property for Conference with Real Property Negotiators is 740 State Street, Suites 201 and 202, leaseholder interest. The city negotiators are Paul Casey, City Administrator Bob Samario, Finance Director Arielle Cologne, City Attorney, and the negotiating parties are Mohamed and Giddy Mohab, Mo-Bob, and Ray Mohab.
Miss Mahboob is the correct pronunciation.
Mahboob, thank you. And under negotiation is price and terms of payment.
Okay, so we'll be at closed session, and we'll be back as soon as we can.
We, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to be a stickler, but we still didn't get the agenda numbers for the two litigation-related sessions.
Okay. See if you can read the number of the item.
Item 19 is Conference with City Attorney, anticipated litigation, and item 20 is Conference with City Attorney, pending litigation.
Okay, all right. Now we will go to closed session, be back as soon as we can. Meeting back to order. We have a couple of housekeeping items first. First, to let people know, we continued item 21 until after we're done with the rest of the agenda today, so we could get back here without too much more delay. And then, there were some items that needed to be read in the consent calendar that just needs to be read into the record at this point, so why don't you do that?
Item 5, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, in ordinance of the City Council of City of Santa Barbara, approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the land purchase agreement, escrow instructions, and grant deed as approved by the city attorney for the sale of certain city excess land located at 20 West Mason Street to James and Kelly Hallman in the amount of $2,398,000. Item 6, recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, in ordinance of the City Council of City of Santa Barbara, approving the agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and the First Baptist Church of Santa Barbara for purchase, use, and delivery of the city's recycled water. Item 7, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, in ordinance of the city, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving the agreement between the City of Santa Barbara and Stone Creek Owners Association for purchase, use, and delivery of the city's recycled water. Item 8, that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, accepting an easement for street purposes on the property known as 717 North Milpus Street, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the city, of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, accepting an easement for street purposes on the property known as 3880 State Street, and adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the city, of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, accepting a portion of land in fee for street purposes on the property known as 3869 State Street.
Thank you, and we had already voted on that separately, that was just reading those items into the record. Okay, so if we could have item number 22?
22, Police Department update.
Thank you. Chief?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council, Lori Luna, Chief of Police. We are here today for update. I have Captain Alex Altavilla and Captain Todd Stoney that are going to participate in this update with me. We have Captain Marizita here for support as well. In today's presentation, we're going to update you on our Public Safety Telecommunicators Week this week, staffing recruitment and hiring update, our calls for service response times, crime stats and trends, animal control and services overview, which was a request from a meeting a couple of months ago from council, and then give you a quick update on our public engagement. So first, I'd like to bring up Fire Chief Pat McElroy, because we want to acknowledge this very important week as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we have our dispatch manager Cindy Freeman here as well. And I want to brag about all that they do. We have a combined communication center, and just in 2016 alone, they handled 151,584 telephone phone calls into the communication center, and 67,808 were 911 calls.
One of the things, Pat McElroy, Fire Chief, one of the things I really want to emphasize, this past year, the combined communication center handled 3,112 emergency medical dispatches. It's a very labor-intensive, very, very stressful thing that our dispatchers have undertaken. And what that means is, when somebody calls 911 and, and there's, in the middle of a medical emergency, the dispatcher start giving them advice and we're talking to that, talking them through that problem until we arrive. So they're really linking and starting care for the patient from the moment that the phone call is answered. And in terms of the answering time of our dispatch center, the average answering time is five seconds. And the national standard is that you hope to get 95% of the calls answered within 15 seconds. So we're well above the national standard. And what does that, you know, for people in Santa Barbara, what does that mean, and how does that translate into patient care? Since we've been doing the EMD in Santa Barbara County over the past few years, there's been a nearly 50% increase in cardiac arrest survival rate. It's one of the highest in the country now. And that's due, is due to the work that's done in the dispatch center by our people, by people at the county, and the various public safety answering points throughout the county. But today, we're going to focus on our folks and the tremendous job that they do, and they don't get a lot of the recognition, and they don't get a lot of the immediate satisfaction that we get on scene, where you, you get a, you get a feedback from the person that's, that you're seeing, you know, whether it's good or bad, you're getting an instant feedback. There's just, suddenly, sometimes ends with somebody hanging up. And so it's, it's a very challenging job, and we're very proud of the people that we have in our center. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Mayor and council members, I have today with me one of our dispatchers, Lorena Renteria. I have to say that I have 32 years of experience in communications, and I've only been here a few short months, and what I've seen is a, is a top-notch team of dispatchers that are very dedicated, and like Chief McElroy mentioned, that they average their 911 answering times within five seconds. And I can assure you that if a citizen calls in the Santa Barbara city area and has an emergency, that they're going to get a very trained, dedicated dispatcher in a very expedient manner to answer the 911 call. And I believe that's...
Did you want, thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I had a question. Five seconds is fabulous. What if you're not sure what to say? Is it, it's not always a cardiac arrest problem, correct?
It is not always, correct.
Yeah. So what, in that instance, do you, do you tell somebody? I'm imagining being on the other end of the line.
Are you talking about a medical emergency?
Yeah.
Well, there's certain, they, they have, but it's called Pro-QA, it's a system where they ask certain questions, and based on those questions, then they know which direction to go on the medical emergency. There are times when you just don't know.
Yeah.
But you, you're, in the meantime, you're sending help there regardless.
Right.
And that's, you send help there first, and then they start their medical instruction. So as best as they can, they assess the situation based on the questioning.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
All right, thank you.
We really want to commend your amazing work, and thank you so much, because it's that calmness on the other side. I know when I've called 911, that no matter what's happening on one end, you're there, and you're making sure that a lot of things are happening to make us safe. So thank you very, very much for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you. And continuing on with our staffing update, this is where we were just over a year ago. We obviously looked much different. I'm proud to sit here and say that we currently have 141 of our 142 positions filled. The reason we have one less from the year prior was our deputy chief that we did not backfill. So we have one active vacancy, and what that truly looks like, though, to put it all into perspective, is we have a total of 24 officers at some point of training or getting ready to enter training. So we've had, we have these people hired, and it takes nine months of total training if they start in the academy and then need to go into field training after that. So we have eight officers right now that are, within this month, going to be finishing their final phase of training, which will be great. We've had several retirements over the last few months. So I'm very proud to bring to you our 12 new, not new employees, but 10 that just graduated the police academy, and our two lateral officers. I quickly want to brag about them, because, one, I'm super proud that these are the ones that I hired from the beginning and take responsibility for, but they are Santa Barbara-type officers, if I've ever seen them. So we have the luxury to hire people that fit what we need and respect most about our officers, and they are truly committed to community, and they get it, or they wouldn't be here. So let me first introduce Blair Dar. He was born, he was born in Laguna Beach, raised in Orange County, received his bachelor's degree in sociology from San Diego State. Guillermo Gutierrez Memo. He was raised here in Santa Barbara, graduated Santa Barbara High School, and then graduated from Cal State Northridge with a bachelor's in sociology. He's been employed with the police department since 2011 as a cadet, and then through the community, and then as a community liaison officer, and he's a Spanish speaker. And we have next Raymond Laco, who was born in the Philippines, grew up in Lompoc, and he joined the military after high school, after serving active-duty army. He currently holds the rank of Sergeant 1st Class in the Army Reserves, and he's a Tagalog speaker. And we have Rocio Lopez, who grew up in Oxnard. She attended University of California Irvine, where she graduated with a criminology, law, and society degree. After graduation, she worked for the Santa Barbara County District Attorney's Office, and she also is a Spanish speaker. We have Robert Parmaly, who was born in West Hills, raised in Moore Park. His father was a veteran officer with the LAPD. He attended Cal State University Channel Islands, where he obtained his bachelor's degree in environmental sciences and resource management. And one of our laterals is Brian Parsons here, who was born in Oxnard, raised in Ventura. He was a lateral officer with nine years of experience from the State Alcohol Beverage and Control Office out of Ventura. And then next, we have Colin Powell, who was born and raised in Santa Barbara. He attended local schools, graduating from Dos Pueblos High School in 2011. He graduated from Adams State University in Colorado with a bachelor's in sociology. And then we have Hannah Princip. She was born in Belgrade, Serbia. She attended New York University, graduated with a bachelor's in politics, and prior to obtaining her master's, she was accepted to UC Davis of Law. She's since graduated with her Juris Doctorate. She just passed the bar, but she is committed to being an officer, this is what she wants. She doesn't want to be a lawyer. I'm just saying. So, we're glad, nothing, yeah. And then we have Dennis Reyes, who was born in LA and spent his early years in Honduras. He joined the US Army in 2018. In 2013, he was promoted to Staff Sergeant, and he also is a Spanish speaker. And also, our second lateral is Hiro Sandoval. He is from LAPD, and he's worked several assignments, including Topanga Division, Van Nuys Jail, and most recently, Foothill Division. He is definitely all about community, and he also is a Spanish speaker. And we have Bradley Scheffler, who was born in Illinois. In 2013, he moved to Mammoth, where he was hired as a part-time firefighter, and he realized that police work was much better than firefighting. So he's here to serve with us as a police officer. And lastly, Dan Wade, who was raised in Oxnard. He recently graduated from Cal Lutheran University, where he was quite an athlete. I don't have those statistics, but his bachelor's degree was in criminal justice, and prior to the academy, he worked for Casa Pacifica as a youth development specialist. So we're very proud of the effort that we put into finding the best of the best and what we've seen from him, and I'm going to assure that you're going to see even greater things to come, so. Aw. Thank you.
I was able to attend part of the graduation ceremony here, and it was a packed house at the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, as you can imagine, with everyone's family and friends coming for 12 graduates, so it was, it was a good vibe in the room, so, welcome very much.
And we're not letting go. Since we are nearly fully staffed, we recognize we're going to have continual openings. We have an open testing process that is open until April 14th, if people are interested in applying. And we just looked at the current statistics, we have 879 people signed up to take our written test on April 21st. We know typically, not all of them show up, but it's pretty realistic to see half of those numbers show up. So if people are still interested, we want them to sign up and attend that testing period as well. We currently have seven vacancies of our 18 in dispatch, so we're continually hiring dispatchers. We have 61 applicants that are currently, have passed the written, I should say, have gone through the written test, that we're going to be put in to some further testing to see how viable they are. We're continually to hire, continually hiring our community service officers. We have five, we have two applicants in backgrounds, and we want to encourage people, too, if they're still interested, to apply for those positions. I am excited to introduce Anthony Wagner. He's our new public engagement manager. He comes to us with some public health and safety land use expertise, so I'm convinced he's going to be a great resource for our city as we move forward with some cannabis regulation, as well as alcohol policy. And he's going to be moving our efforts forward with our community engagement in regards to helping to mobilize our chief's advisory board, which I'll talk about shortly at the end of this presentation. But we are still hiring our, for our Student Neighborhood Assistance Program. We have two SNAP officers hired. We just hired our third that's starting tomorrow, so we're continuing to do what we can to get those folks in the field, and it's going to be very soon. They just went on ride-alongs up in San Luis Obispo to see how they did it. And then Howie Giles is on board as our volunteer administrator. We have our first nine volunteers, we're getting worked through backgrounds right now, and we're going to start, our goal was 10, to move forward to see what we can best bring to the city. And I know one of the things we're going to do, as aggressively as we can, is to get a presence on State Street with our volunteers to be ambassadors for our city, and then I see that expanding to Milpus and to other areas, to be the extra eyes and ears and smiling faces to provide information to our community. But if anybody is interested in volunteering, Howie's email is on this presentation. So next, I'd like to turn over this presentation to Captain Altavilla.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. Alex Altavilla, I'm the Field Operations Captain for the Police Department. We frequently come to you with statistics, so we thought this time, we'd actually give you a visual representation of some of the, the calls for service and the offenses that we have in the overall city area. This one specifically is offenses and calls for service that is laid over the framework of our six different beats. And for the viewing public, the police department has six beats. You can see number one there, which is typically the east side. Number two is going to run along the beachfront, Cabrillo Boulevard. Three and four are going to run in downtown, the downtown district. Beat five is going to be up in our San Roque area, and then beat six is going to be on the west side of the freeway. So that's the beat structure. These on-view, I mean, the offenses and the calls for service are for a six-month period of time. We went ahead and extracted the data of on-view activity, and this is for the same period of time, again, over that six-beat framework. And what this shows is... And what this shows is our officers' on-view initiated activity. So this is typically generated if they see a violation and they go ahead and they take action out of themselves, as opposed to a call for service. You can also see in this that there are clusters in the downtown area, downtown corridor, and also over on Milpa Street. This next slide speaks to our Priority One and our Priority Two response times. And I'll speak specifically, first of all, for Priority One, calls for service. And they are typically defined as a call for service that may result in injury or death. And our P3 target for that is seven minutes. So you can see from our year-to-date average, all the way to 2017, that right now we're at six minutes. So this is basically a scenario where Cindy and her staff in the Combined Communications Center picks up the phone within five seconds, and we actually have an officer on scene for a Priority One call for service. Another thing to point out with Priority One calls for service, because they can result in injury or death, is, for instance, the traffic collisions. We typically have public safety on scene a lot sooner than that from our colleagues at the fire department. So these response times are even better when you add in our team effort with the fire department when it comes to overall public service. Regards to P3, Priority Two response times, these are the calls that may not result in injury or death. Our P3 response target is 14.5 minutes, and you can see here in both cases, Priority One and Two response times, we are starting to see those trend down in 2017, which is, which is promising. Our Priority Three and Four response times are depicted here. Priority Three response times or calls for service are typically alarms and investigations. And our P3 target for those are 30 minutes. And again, you see a trend in 2017 that's starting to reduce those, which is promising. And then our, finally, our fourth tier of response times is our Priority Four calls for service, and those would be basically just a cold investigation. And our P3 target for that is 50 minutes. So again, we're seeing some pretty good trends in that area. We talk about overall violent crime, and what fits in that category is Part One crime, which is violent, which is homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assaults. Those are the broad categories. You can see from our yearly totals that there has been a increasing trend all the way up until 2016. However, if you look at our year-to-date totals, March being year-to-date, we also see a trend, which is promising, that is starting to trend back down in 2017 with 104 of those instances. We look at property crimes. Those typically are burglary, and burglary is broken down into commercial and residential. We also have grand theft auto, burglary theft from vehicle, grand theft, and petty theft. And again, if you look at the year-to-date totals, we did see a little bit of an increase in 2016, and again, you have to kind of look at the numbers. I mean, they're significant to the people that call in, but the numbers, you know, are rather nominal. And then again, year-to-date, all the way to March, we definitely see a good trend where we see them, again, reducing back in 2017.
And next, Captain Stoney will give us our animal control services overview.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Captain Todd Stoney. I'm in charge of our Community Services Division, and that oversees our animal control officers. We currently have two full-time animal control officers. We have a third in background. The third would make us fully staffed. It's a 24/7 operation. Our two officers currently work during the weekday hours, but will respond at night or on weekends to a priority call. We average approximately 2,700 calls per year. 180 of those are animal bites. Our animal control officers also enforce the state humane laws. They manage our strays and abused and injured animals, as well as educate the public on all things related to animals. In terms of the animal licensing, there have been some questions on our Pet Data, which is the pet licensing vendor that we use. It is a very cost-effective tool for the city. We started using this in 2010. It is the only full-service business process center for animal licenses. We offer both six one-year, two-year, and three-year renewals. There's an added feature. Not only does Pet Data reach out to those people whose license is expired, but they can do online payments and processing. The expense in fiscal year 2016 for Pet Data was approximately $15,000. If you look at our total licensing in the city, we have approximately 4,500 per year. That's reflected by the blue line on the top of the graph. Our new animal licenses, we approximately 3,700 per year. Why there's a difference in those two lines is, again, we can renew on a one-year, two-year, or three-year basis, so our yearly renewals won't be reflecting our total number because we have multi-year licenses that are out there. And finally, in terms of our Pet Data, how we are getting people paying for their license, 65% will mail in the information to Pet Data, 22% go online, and we also, on both Monday and Wednesdays, between 9:00 and 4:00, people can come into the lobby of the police department and pay in person. We've recently started some outreach and tried to contact some people to get licenses. We showed up at a local Cares for Paws event and licensed 28 animals, and we're also exploring some participation in some of our adoption events in the city.
Okay. And lastly, I just want to touch on some of our new community engagement efforts. We are going to be continuing with our Voices program, if you will, and it is something that these officers are going to be going through, and it is our local community organizations have come together to really work to produce meaningful exchanges in some facilitated inter-group dialogue. And I know she's here, so I want to point out, we appreciate definitely our community's support in creating these opportunities in the dialogue, and Lizzie Rodriguez is one of them, along with Jordan Killer Brew, Dr. Howie Giles, and Dr. Carmel Saad, and Jared Schwartz. They have been continuing to contribute and create in this structure for the meaningful dialogue that on often, on often difficult topics that these young officers are going to be discussing. So we are moving forward with our affinity cards. We have a new card that was sponsored by Downtown Santa Barbara, so I want to thank our local businesses that step forward to sponsor the cost of producing those cards and City TV that's really worked hard to produce those videos that humanize our officers within the community. We have a new program that we started, Aligning Perceptions, is a class that's offered at Santa Barbara City College. And what that is, is a collaborative and critical thinking exercises. So our officers attend those courses for post-credits with some of our students in criminal justice programs, and they have, again, another opportunity for meaningful exchange of information and dialogue and ideas. So I want to thank the Justice Studies Department at Santa Barbara City College for opening their doors to this, and specifically our Sergeant Sean Hill, who has been behind this, this course. And then we're continuing with community conversations. We are invited in to definitely many community forums at local congregations, and I want to thank the new Covenant Worship Center for inviting us in to their space for some of these most recent dialogues. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, with our new community engagement manager's assistance, we're going to be moving forward with an application process for our chief's advisory board, and then a youth advisory board to follow that affords the community opportunity, I think, community that's reflective of really our whole entire city, to have some open dialogue and to discuss some of the issues we're dealing with and potential programs in the future. So with that, I would like to open the door to questions for you all.
Thank you. We do have one speaker slip. Why don't we do that, and then we'll bring it back to council for questions or comments. So Lizzie Rodriguez, why don't you come on up? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Santa Barbara is known for its tourism and hospitality, often referred to as the American Riviera. According to last year's TOT report, the city of Santa Barbara generated 22.5 million in TOT revenue. As you know, this number is expected to increase with the added 2%, and PKF's hospitality research forecasting a slight increase in tourism for this coming year. Tourism is highly reliant on a thriving city and dependable employees. Unfortunately, many of those employees are low-wage workers, and many of them are affected by the recent immigration policies. Following the Trump administration's immediate increase of deportation of undocumented immigrants, we saw an increase of employees not showing up for work, psychological and behavioral issues in schoolchildren, and a decrease in patronage of Latino businesses. Sadly, false rumors of ICE raids began to plague social media, and it was spread through text messaging. Not only because is this the right thing to do, but also because our city greatly depends on our Latino community, it is our responsibility, i.e., your responsibility, to offer a safe place for them to live. This can be accomplished through declaring sanctuary or safe space status, but it can also be accomplished through community collaborative efforts. I'm proud to share with you that Chief Luno and the Santa Barbara Police Department initiated a meeting of community leaders, which evolved into what's called the Immigration Rapid Response Network. This network connects key stakeholders to help share information to the Latino community, as well as confirm or debunk rumors on immigration and law enforcement. I'm sharing this with you today because we depend on our Latino and undocumented community for the vitality of our city. Therefore, we need to provide a space and a place for them to feel supported and an environment to thrive. Our city budget depends on it. I want to thank the chief for initiating this conversation and for initiating the Immigration Rapid Response Network, and I task you, council, to come up with more ways that we can collaboratively work together to protect our Latino and undocumented community members.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. So that concludes the public comment part. It's to the council, and I want to thank you, Lizzie, also, for your participation in this. It's been a great partnership, and that initial meeting was, that I also attended, was very worthwhile, and I know it's, some really great work has come out of it, so thank you for your role in that as well. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Chief, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on a very impressive-looking class that you've got coming forward. That's, that's good news. And whenever we give these reports, I'm always kind of impressed and mindful of what percentage of the department's time and effort must be put into just HR issues, i.e., recruiting, training, and what you have to do to put your product on the, on the street. And as you've probably heard a lot lately, there's, there's been a lot of comments and discussion and meetings regarding presence and particularly in the downtown corridor and, and what we, what we can do to have a greater uniform presence. And what I'm getting to is, I'm kind of curious about, not so much your sworn's, but the non-sworn force that we've committed to from council to having on the street, that it's been, from time to time, fully staffed, other times not staffed, and I know, and I know as an employer that hiring is no slam dunk these days. I, you know, I get that, and I get what, it must be difficult for that. And I'm kind of wondering, in terms of the, not so much your sworn's, but your, the other things that you have to do with CSOs, blue shirts, yellow shirts, that type of thing, in terms of your priorities, in terms of your ability, and in terms of how much departmental effort goes into that kind of hiring and maintenance, is that, I mean, that seems like it might be an extraordinary burden. What, you know, can you respond to that at all for me in terms of what it takes to put the folks out there and, and what we could do to maybe, maybe, you know, help that situation, if at all possible?
Councilmember Rouse, yes, it's very challenging, specifically to hire community service officers. It's a part-time position we offer, and we hire great people. It takes great effort to get them through backgrounds. We need to go through a lot of people that meet our standards to be, that basically have access to our police department and whatnot. But there's quite a bit of turnover because a lot of people move on to full-paying positions and other opportunities. And then, in addition to that, with the turnover, it's often difficult for us to get people to the proper training they need in a timely fashion to be able to truly work to the full capacity of that position, and, for example, write citations as one of their job functions. So there's only a couple of classes that allow us to, throughout the year, that allow that training to occur to get them the approval to issue citations. So in saying that, we've, we've looked at other things. We think there's other options. I'm the first to say that I think a presence, no matter what it looks like, can be very effective. And with that, I know we're beefing up our volunteer program, and that's going to be something that has endless supplies of resources, as far as I'm concerned, with all the support I've seen in this community. We've been working, just as of last week, we're given the offer, I should say, of a storefront office on State Street, which could provide us a working space for our volunteers, a very visible one to the community, as well as basically an operations center for our resources that we do have allocated to State Street, our, our tactical patrol force, and our beat coordinators. It's one mechanism to keep them closer to State Street so they don't have to run back to the station to do police reports or other things. So yes, I think the door is open for us to find efficiencies within those programs.
Mr. Casey, you have a? Yeah, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the Community Service Officer Program was created at council direction about two years ago, $150,000. We evaluated a number of different ways about how providing kind of this additional presence on State Street, and we settled on this approach with a part-time police department employee that has citation authority, that requires real extensive background checks and other items, and we've had a hard time struggling keeping it staffed. And I'm not sure it's kind of hit what we envisioned when we came up with this program two years ago. So I'm working with the police department and the Public Works Department to maybe reevaluate that $150,000 commitment and see if there's a different way of getting that presence on State Street, and maybe doing it in a more effective manner that we can recruit more effectively and keep people there and a greater presence. Because it's a, it's a big time suck, to be honest, I think, from the police department, the constant grind of trying to keep those positions filled. So I just, I'm, I want to let you all know that I'm looking at it administratively to see if there's a different way we might want to consider doing this.
No, because we don't want to distract from the mission. I mean, the mission is obviously critical, and there, like I said, there has been criticism, but the idea has been to have a visible, uniform presence at all time. Whether or not that presence can write a citation, I think, is secondary to what the original idea was. And I think there may be a way to re-task that, or a way to look at it, so maybe even change what department it comes out of. I'm not really sure how creatively we could do it. I know Chief probably doesn't need to have extra distractions right about now, so that would, I would, I would love to see that conversation go forward, because I do think that stretching our ability to be visibly present is important, whether or not it's actually uniform. Nothing beats a uniform, but if we could have other people out there, and I'm sure your volunteer thing, I'm really looking forward to that, because we had a huge, very visible host program years ago that was, that was pretty effective downtown. So anyway, looking forward to that. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that you're thinking along those lines, and I'd be interested to see how the conversation goes with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I want to second Councilmember Rouse's comments and, and also take off on Lizzie's comments, too, about Chief's, your engagement with the immigrant community and creating the Rapid Response Network. It's really impressive, and I know it's calming to folks in the community to have accurate information. That's been a real struggle in these last few months. In regards to the presence on State Street, I think that the biggest news for the community is sitting in this room right here. This, this is the picture that we want to put on Facebook and on the newspaper, that these new men and women that are joining the department are really going to help in that, that you have been stretched. You know, this, the vacancy dip that we had in staffing has been a real item that had to be dealt with, and your leadership and your team has brought a bunch of new fabulous officers to the community that folks are looking forward to having serve. And that has been hard for us to communicate to the business community downtown, that there's a real life, you know, there's an aircraft carrier turning here in there's an aircraft carrier turning here, and it's taken a while to turn, but the evidence is in the room that we have the folks here to fill in the gaps that have been obvious, I think, to many, many people. But anything you can add to that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to talk about that. We had a meeting this morning with a downtown organization. It is clearly a topic of conversation in the downtown community about the presence of police department in every variety on the streets. So is there anything else you can add to that conversation?
Just that we're committed to examining our resources and truly what we believe will be effective. Again, from my perspective, we exist to handle the criminal element. It's not a crime to be homeless, and unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do. Somebody, and I don't even want to take it on to manage some of those broader issues beyond working with the existing resources we have. So I don't know if there's a strategy we can employ to best tackle some of the bigger challenges, but we're committed to definitely examining that a little further to see if we can be more efficient in our strategy, and if there's some times that we need to adjust to be more effective and show a presence. I want to say that each of these new officers are going to be with our field training officers when they finish their mandated training, and they're going to be walking up State Street, meeting some of our business owners, and they're going to be gaining some intelligence from that, I can only imagine. So that's one of the things we're looking at, as a means to really get some additional information, because we realize crime stats are reflective of who calls in and doesn't necessarily paint that picture for you for really what's going on. So the leadership and I have been down there in uniform, walking around, trying to do what we can. So it's just a matter of keeping after it and being creative, because we do end up, I should say, issues adjust to our tactics often. And the one thing I want to point out about our new public engagement manager is he does have some expertise in crime prevention through environmental design. So he, again, is a great asset to our team for what he can bring in regards to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we see a change up-down in makeup of our transient population?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I can't speak to the change. I think we can speak for several different categories of them. We have some of our chronically homeless that our restorative folks work very closely with, that they would say have quite a bit of mental health issues. We've got our travelers. We've got people that choose that lifestyle. I think it's, we see a constant influx of new people and departures, but I'm encouraged by the statistics that I've heard that our homeless population is less than it was last year.
So our downtown business folks are not happy still. How do we handle it if somebody is sitting on a bench saying rude things to people walking by? Crude, I would say.
Help me out, Alex.
Madam Mayor...
Because the reason I ask is they're asking us that question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I want to assure everybody in Santa Barbara that we have a safe community. And if we're specifically talking about the downtown, when they're in the downtown corridor, they're safe. What we typically end up fighting against is the perception of safety and also dealing with what you espouse here as noncriminal activity. So we will respond to calls for service with that disruptive behavior, even though it's not criminal. However, our ability to mitigate that from a criminal perspective is very limited. And I'll give you an example. We had an individual on business on State Street that I'm working with currently, and when I went to meet with her staff, there was a group out in front of the business on benches, again, homeless, dogs, you know, maybe unsightly smoking, and no criminal violations. But I asked them, you know, could you guys go ahead and move on? And the answer is, no, we're not going to. Unfortunately, from a criminal perspective, that's a challenge for us. I think it really comes back to Councilmember Rouse, who hit the nail on the head. It comes down to presence. If we have some element of presence down there, whatever that may be, it gives people in the community, our tourists, the perception that they're safe, even though we know they are safe.
All right. So let's say that somebody is saying rude or crude things. Can we say, hey, clean up your language?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we can request people to do a variety of different things. From a legal perspective, our ability to go ahead and force them to do that, the legal framework isn't there.
Yeah, I'm not really talking about legality. It's more a sense of attitude, and that's what our business folks are wondering about, in a sense of, do people realize we're serious? If you're going to be on State Street or anywhere in Santa Barbara, you've got to behave appropriately. And making other people frightened or refusing to, or unwilling to bring their kids downtown because people are saying filthy words is not a good deal, and we don't want to promote that. We want to prevent that. So, you know, I realize I'm asking you to do a difficult task, Chief, but that's what people want. So how do we do that? And maybe you want to come back with me, to me later, to describe that.
I want to say, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hotchkiss, everything we do is a balance, and people have civil rights, and there's a lot of the tools that we had that are not available to us because of case law that has taken them away. And I'm not going to promote a culture of bullying, if you will, but that's where we go back to a presence and managing the crime that we see and taking care of the little things that create the environment that give them power. There's usually, there are groups of people that create communities and feel empowered by each other. We have the resources with our partners to address some of the mental health issues in regards to assessment. Oftentimes, our hands are tied with actually getting them places to get resources, or they don't want those. So it's just, again, the constant assessment of the task on hand and being engaged, being onsite, and adapting accordingly. I wish I had a more concrete response, but it's a challenge. It's one of the challenges we're faced with every single day.
Well, I wish we had a more concrete response, too, because you just said we're not going to be bullies, but we're allowing other people to bully us. That doesn't make sense to me. So how we figure around that or how we get around that, I don't know. I realize I'm lobbing a hand grenade in your direction, but it's one that we get asked, and frankly, the people, not just on State Street, but throughout Santa Barbara, saying, look, we've got problems on State Street. It's our fault. We need to do something. And I think a strong, maybe a stiffer backbone in one way or another is required. I'll just leave that with you. You know, blame it on me.
Mr. Dominguez?
So a quick question from Mr. Casey before I jump in with some comments on the department, and this is just a follow-up on Mr. Rouse. Regarding the CSOs, you said you're working with a couple departments to come up with some improvements. What's the timeline? Just because people are really concerned, so I want to get back to them with some calendaring here.
Yeah, you know, Councilmember Dominguez, I don't want to put a specific timeline on it, but sooner rather than later. I think we're actively talking about different approaches. If it requires us to maybe move it from out of police into a different department, got to set that framework up. We've got to transition our existing CSO officers over and kind of figure that out. But I'm talking just a matter of months, maybe even before we finish adopting the budget in June, having a game plan in place to begin implementing in the summer.
So during the summer, fall, kind of late, worst-case scenario?
Yeah. Again, I don't have the answer yet, so that's why I don't want to be fully committed to it. But yes, I understand the urgency and the need, and I don't think the CSO is quite clicking on all cylinders like we want it to, and so I want to quickly evaluate it and see if there's a different approach to take. I kind of consider this, this is a pilot project to try out. Maybe it's not quite working. Let's try a different approach and see if that works better.
And it's particularly timely now. We have the double whammy. You have not only these people out on the street who are causing concerns, but then also the vacancy rate. Seems like every day more are adding to the list. So regarding the police department, Chief Luna, great job hiring this new class of recruits. I'm really excited to have them here and looking forward to working with them. Great job hiring a new public engagement manager. I think it's exciting that you've come here in your first year and made some changes to the department's structure, and we have a new person who's going to help us with some of these long-term problems. I think what I'd like to see in the next year is articulating what are some of the goals that the new personnel will help us achieve, because the P3s that are on the books for this budget process are getting a few years old. So if there's some goals you can add in besides our priority response time and some of the old measures, but some of the newer measures that, as a council, we can get behind you and support, because I'd love to see you have some ambitious goals. I've told everyone you're a great competitor, and it's true. So I'd love to see this competitive attitude by the department. These are the goals we're going to achieve. You know, one of the things I've been really pushing is our parks, getting the perception of our parks as safer places. There's a perception issue. So if there's some goals we can create around managing our parks and changing who's there and what they're doing to a more productive use of the parks, that would be great. So anything you can do in terms of setting goals that you can come back to us if there's resources you need or you need us to approve, changes in the structure of the department, I think we're going to be very open to that. Again, because you're in your first year, you've been here now long enough to see what's been working and what's not. So feel free to have that flexibility to come back to us. One specific question. When will the second restorative unit be restored if it hasn't already taken place?
The second position for the restorative unit is one of those that when we get these 12 out in the field, it will afford us some flexibility to fill in our specialty positions that we no longer have. So four-month timeline, and restorative is one of our priorities, along with traffic, as well as our special enforcement team, which is going to be a proactive response team that can address a multitude of issues within the city.
So did you say four-month timeline?
Well, these folks include our laterals, that I say about four months is when we're hopefully going to see the ability to put those positions back into specialties. So if we, over the next four months, see several people retire, and right now we have more than 20 people that are of retirement age that can retire. If they choose to leave in the next four months, then that's going to mean that we do not have the extra people to put back into specialties. Rather, we will be backfilling patrol positions, and that's where we've been in the last several months.
And I don't think you were at the housing meeting we had with council, and we recognized Officer Hove at the end, and he got a rousing applaud from the crowd, because so many nonprofits and government agencies know him and the great work he's done. He's really a great force in that arena. So it'd be great to have someone out there with them. The question Councilmember Hotchkiss brought up about people sitting on State Street, one of the issues is some of the benches and some of the fountains and some of the artwork we've had out there. Seems like at this point, it's a liability. So I'd love to hear from your perspective where you stand on something we could do to change that. I talked to residents, tourists, and business owners on State Street. No one really seems to feel some of this hardware is serving our community. So I'd like to know if it helps you in your approach to solving some of these problems, or if it's a hindrance.
Councilmember Dominguez, I don't think I can just respond as a generality. I think, and again, with this great resource, really having the ability to dig in to a specific issue and looking at a specific environment and assessing it from that perspective is what we need to do. And again, sometimes it's cruze in crowds of people that maybe we can take on in more of a stay-away order component, or it may be physical design where we, you know, need to suggest changing some of the things that we have out there. But just as far as, in general terms, I know that we need to have thoughtful discussion about what's going in from that crime prevention, especially that crime prevention side when we are addressing the challenges that we currently are.
And I'd ask, at least, my 1/7th of council in my district, which includes State Street, is we make that one of the higher priorities? And just to give a short backdrop, having talked to the residents, tourists, and business owners about benches and other hardscape, I ask if you use these or your customers do, and they say, no, because people vomit on these benches, they poop and pee on these benches, they're sitting there doing drugs and drinking and smoking. So it seems like our communities kind of voted with their feet and not wanting to use this hardscape. So at this point, it does seem like it's a liability. I appreciate your interest in studying the issue and coming up with a long-term measured response. And also, I'm wondering, you had noticed or noted some homeless stats, or how many calls for service, or how much of your department time tends to relate to the homeless. Can you repeat that for us here today?
I don't have those hard statistics. It's one of the things we don't track. It's, if it gets captured, we had that during a presentation, I believe it was 6% that we could specifically say based on the way the call was taken and reported to us. But anecdotally, our officers say well over half of our radio calls are attributed to homeless-related issues and nuisances.
So that's something I'd like to see come up in the context of budget talks, how much it's really costing the city, and I'm guessing it's in the hundreds, if not millions of dollars, and if there's something we can do to change that paradigm. So that's something, hopefully, long-term, we can address. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I'd like to welcome the new officers and congratulate you for serving our city. I know I'm looking forward to seeing you out on the streets, not getting in trouble. And I've asked the chief to confirm if we have the highest percentage of female officers in the country. I think, we think so, right? It's pretty high.
I can't validate that, Councilmember Mario, but all I know is we have over 20%, and I have not worked in an agency or seen an agency close to that.
Well, I'm very proud of our diversity. Thank you, Chief. And also, thanks for the pet licensing information. I think I asked about that maybe the last time, so I'm really grateful for that. Thank you so much, Captain Stoney. And then also, thanks, Chief, for being at the teen coalition meeting for breakfast, the breakfast meeting this morning at the West Side Boys and Girls Club. And so I know you know that PAL is a resource when you develop your youth council, but there's also our youth council, Santa Barbara Youth Council, under our teen programs. So there's actually two leadership programs that the city oversees. And I know that they would give you some good advice about putting your program. They would love that if you checked in with them. And if you remember, they were part of the group that did a welcome reception for you at the Louise Lowry Davis Center. And so then, so is it Giles or Guiles? You say Giles?
Councilmember Mario, it's Howie Giles.
Giles. And is that him right there? No.
No, that's our public engagement manager, Anthony Wagner.
Oh, hi. Okay. So I guess, I just wanted to be clear about what to refer, you know, so those are community issues, right? They're not really emergency, 911, hardcore law enforcement issues. So just maybe, real quick, what kind of issues would we refer? Like, for instance, there's some ladies who are bringing forward some ACLU concerns about how the department deals with undocumented people, and that sounds like something to refer to the new community liaison?
Councilmember Mario, no. Let me clarify. Howie Giles is our volunteer administrator. So he's going to manage the volunteers that, from application to assignment within our organization.
Okay.
Anthony's here as a resource to us. Just keep referring things as you have through our beat coordinators or who's appropriate, our lieutenant in community services directly for council.
Thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you again for the presentation. You know, there's, sounds, on issues related to impacts on homelessness on State Street and elsewhere, we throw a lot of anecdotal stories and numbers around, and I think the closer we get to real data, the better we can deal with the perception of what really goes on on State Street and trying to address it. Going from 6% to 50% of calls for service, I mean, that just, you know, there's got to be some real number there. So as much as we can figure that out as much as possible. Even if it was close to 50 or even if it was 50, every call for service, it sounds to me that the second restorative policing officer priority should be as high up as possible, because that work actually reduces calls for service, because they're interacting with the individuals that create the calls for service. So hopefully, that would be a more cost-effective way and a more solution-oriented way instead of... of just enforcing over and over again the same kind of thing. Same thing with benches. I mean, I, you know, purposefully drove up State Street, you know, Saturday, Sunday afternoon, and looked at the benches and who were, you know, who were sitting on them, and tourists were sitting on them and smiling and eating ice cream and doing things, you know. I mean, so, you know, you have one bad story that is not a pleasant one, that gets repeated sometimes, that sounds like that's all you see on State Street, and that's not necessarily the case, and that's why I think having good data is really important. The presence that's going to happen on State Street through either volunteering or additional officers or yourself or your team, that's always going to help. So that way, we're not just relying on anecdotal stories that may have happened a long time ago, we have actual real data. So, because people's perceptions are important, and that's a part of what I know I heard in the last couple of weeks. But, you know, we're also doing some excellent work, I know, in conjunction with social service agencies and so forth. So just encourage that kind of real facts moving forward would be helpful. But I really am looking forward to seeing everyone on the beat or wherever you're going to end up being assigned, and we're very excited to have you here. So welcome again, and thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, there's no motion necessary here, so thank you for that. We will move on to item number 23.
Item 23, appeal of 6100 Hollister Avenue Light Industrial Project Approval.
Thank you. First, thank you for your patience. And just so you know how this will work, as an appeal, we have, we'll have a staff presentation first, and then the appellant's will have up to 20 minutes to give their presentation. You don't have to use the entire 20-minute period, but any time left over can be used, the balance of that could be used after any public comment. There's, the applicant is us, so the staff presentation would count as that, so you don't need a separate presentation for the applicant. We'll have public comment, and then when it comes to council, it stays up here unless we have questions for anyone in the audience. So before I get started, I do need to ask if there's been any ex parte communications prior to this hearing on this issue. I will, I will say that I did speak with Mayor Prode back in January or so, just asking, did you know about it? Was there a vote? And the answer was not at that time. I also separately mentioned, just asked the question to incoming members, Kyle Richardson, Stuart Kason, who are here, who literally was just fresh on to the city council. So just sort of, just asked the question to look into it. So I just, no particular information came back that would sway me in the position, it was just more of just reaching out to a colleague in Galita. So with that, Ms. Brook?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Today, we're here before you to discuss a project proposed at 6100 Hollister Avenue. It's an industrial commercial project proposed by the Airport Department of the City of Santa Barbara. That project was approved by the Planning Commission in October of 2016 and was appealed by the City of Galita, and so it is before you today. The appeal was filed by Michelle Green, the City of Galita city manager, again, of the Planning Commission approval. The action that the Planning Commission took that day was for the development plan that's required in order to construct this type of project. The two main points that were asserted in the appeal letter by the City of Galita are inadequate SEQA compliance and inadequate traffic analysis and mitigation. Our recommendation to city council, as it's also outlined in your council agenda report, is that you consider the appeal and take an action to approve, continue, or deny the This just summarizes the presentation outline. I'll get into a little bit of background of the project, its review history, and then focus most of the presentation on the appeal points and our response to those points. So the project is located here on Hollister Avenue. The city boundaries are shown in the two different colors here. So this blue sort of aqua color is the City of Santa Barbara boundaries. The airport is down here. This proposed project is here at 6100 Hollister, within the City of Santa Barbara boundaries. The area is largely surrounded by City of Galita boundaries. The project site is 5.29 acres. The project components include demolishing an existing structure on the site and constructing a mix of light industrial and commercial development, a total of about 47,000 square feet divided up into nine buildings, also 143 parking spaces. There is some grading that needs to occur on the site, including some fill in order to get the foundation elevation of the buildings above the flood elevation. Also, a significant amount of landscaping is being proposed as part of this project. Here's a site plan for the project. Again, Hollister Avenue is down here at the bottom of the slide. Frederick Lopez Road is to the east. David Love Place is to the west. This Wallace Becknell Road is a new road that will be constructed as part of the Direct Relief Project, which is up here north of that, that you see slightly shaded in there. The project at 6100 Hollister is primarily contained within this area of the site. There is a small portion here that would go north of Wallace Becknell Road. And here's some elevations of the industrial buildings proposed and some of the retail buildings that would be on the two outer flanks of that main portion of the site that's proposed for development. So a bit of site history, the project is proposed within the area encompassed by the Airport Industrial Specific Plan, which was adopted by city council in 1998. The specific plan totals an area of 225 acres, and as I mentioned, this site is just over five acres. Also, part of the entire specific plan, it envisioned a total of 412,000 square feet of development in the area of the specific plan. This project itself is just 46,000 square feet. Direct relief is approximately 155,000 square feet of that, and there is some other proposed development and/or some that have already been constructed that, after construction of this project, if approved, would leave over 177,000 square feet of potential development within the specific plan area that was envisioned by the specific plan and the EIR that was prepared for that specific plan. Also want to point out here, there were some prior projects that were approved on this site but were never constructed. And as you'll recall, last year, as I mentioned, that Direct Relief Project, the City of Santa Barbara sold off that northern portion of the project for the Direct Relief proposal. And this is another graphic here that shows you the industrial, most of the industrial specific plan area, and then the actual project area, it shifted a little bit here, but we're here in this area of the specific plan for this project. So as the project was being developed by the Airport Department, they did confer with the Ad-Hoc Committee on Airport Development, and also included City of Galita staff in the scoping meeting for the project and throughout the City of Santa Barbara's Development Application Review Process. Also, the City of Galita was consulted in the traffic study, the scope, the assumptions, the methodology of the traffic study that is and was considered by the Planning Commission and is in your packet that's dated August 19, 2016. As I mentioned, it did go before the Ad-Hoc Committee last February. The project also went to the City of Santa Barbara ABR last February and received positive comments. Staff came to you last year to give you an overview of this project, so you had an idea of what was coming down the road. And then, in just last October, the Planning Commission considered the project and approved the development plan. As part of project review and environmental review that city staff does, we did, Airport Department is the applicant, commissioned a traffic study and looked at 11 different intersections surrounding the project through which this project would send traffic. As I mentioned, we did consult with Galita on the scope of the study. We also used the Galita traffic model for trip distribution, as is our agreement with the City of Galita. And so the traffic study looked at our existing peak hour levels of service at these intersections, the existing level of service with the project trips added, and then also looked at cumulative impacts in those intersections with the project added. The traffic study also considered future traffic scenarios. It had one scenario that included a proposed traffic improvement at Equale Fowler Road extensions, and it also assumed, as a condition of approval of the Direct Relief Project, that they have to do an improvement at the Fairview Avenue, Highway 101, northbound ramps. At the request of the City of Galita, there is also another scenario in the project traffic study that removes the Equale Fowler Road extensions, just in case those were not to come to light. So that also was considered in a separate scenario in the traffic study. And with those scenarios and assumptions, the traffic study for the project found that there would be no significant project-specific or cumulative impacts, using both the City of Galita and the City of Santa Barbara criteria for making those findings. There was a finding that with future cumulative traffic in this area of the specific plan, that the Hollister Avenue-David Love intersection would meet one criterion for a traffic light, where there is not a traffic light there at this time. It's important to point out, though, those criterion for what we call traffic signal warrants are just guidelines, they're not mandatory. If they trip one of these criterion, it doesn't mean that we have to install a traffic signal. So in light of the adjacent traffic signals, both east and west of that intersection, City of Santa Barbara staff were not supportive of installing the traffic signal at the David Love Place intersection with Hollister Avenue, and instead would recommend one of the two options that are outlined in the traffic study. And I have to point out here on this slide, with more recent analysis, we actually would not recommend the U-turn option in the Hollister Avenue median. There's another option detailed in the traffic study that we would prefer, and that helps deal with a future project of a car dealership at that intersection of David Love Place and Hollister Avenue that would cause the most demand for a potential traffic signal. And so some median changes along Hollister Avenue can help address traffic flow when that project's constructed. And so that would be a condition of approval, a component of this project, to do those median improvements in Hollister Avenue. So then, to get to the two primary appeal points, as I mentioned, the two major points raised by the City of Galita is the assertion that the City of Santa Barbara failed to comply with SEQA, in that our use of SEQA Guidelines Section 15183 was characterized as avoiding SEQA review, that the SEQA determination by staff and the Planning Commission was not supported by evidence or findings, and also that there was inadequate analysis of traffic impacts and mitigation for the project. So city council certified a program EIR for the Airport Industrial Specific Plan when it adopted, or just prior to adopting the specific plan, in 1997. As part of that, the EIR did find that there would be some Class 1 significant cumulative traffic impacts, as well as air quality impacts, and council made overriding considerations for those, finding that the benefits of the buildout of the specific plan outweighed the impacts of traffic and air quality cumulative impacts. We did, as part of our review of this project before you today, call for some updated technical reports to ensure that there weren't new information or new impacts as a result of since that last, since the EIR and the subsequent addenda were prepared, including traffic analysis, geotechnical, some Phase 1 and 2 site assessments, archaeological study, and then some additional air quality analysis. So staff looked at the potential impacts of this project in light of the scope of development that was covered in the prior EIR, and determined that the project impacts are within the scope of that analysis. There's no new or greater impacts identified with this project that were covered in the prior EIR. Because of that, SEQA Guidelines Section 15183 mandates that we don't have to do additional environmental review if the project is within, is consistent with the density that's designated by the existing plan, for which an EIR was certified. For that reason, we did not, leading up to the Planning Commission hearing, we did not do additional environmental review beyond, as I mentioned, the studies that we commissioned and concluded that there would not be significant or new environmental impacts. So throughout our environmental review, as I mentioned, we called for updated project technical reports, we looked at the project's scope and its impacts in comparison to the conclusions of the EIR analysis, and found that there would not be new or significant impacts as a result of this project. And so the SEQA statute and the guidelines allowed for our use of that Section 15183 Even with that, staff did, since filing of the appeal, we did prepare an addendum to the prior EIR to further clarify and document our environmental analysis for the current project. And we've done that, it's attached to your CAR, it should be considered together with the prior EIR. It does not require public review, it does not require circulation, but it is considered a part of the prior EIR. The second point of the appeal asserts that the project does not adequately mitigate traffic impacts, and in particular, the City of Galita points out that Specific Plan 6 and the EIR require a traffic mitigation agreement between the two cities. And also, the EIR and Specific Plan mentions two mitigation measures to address these traffic impacts associated with the Specific Plan buildout. And you'll probably hear these numbers referred to many times, mitigation measure 3.20-2 and mitigation measure 3.20-6, which I'll get into in a moment. So it is true that there is no current traffic mitigation agreement between the two cities. There was a prior agreement that the City of Santa Barbara had with the County of Santa Barbara. We had an MOU that related to a prior project that was proposed in this area, but that expired in 2009, the project was not built. We have not yet entered into a new agreement with the City of Galita. Specific Plan 6 EIR identifies feasible mitigation for a Specific Plan buildout, and as part of that, the City of Santa Barbara is asked to contribute a fair share towards traffic improvements that can help mitigate the buildout. And specifically mentions the Los Carneros US Highway 101, southbound ramps, and the Hollister-Fairview Avenue intersection. Carrying forward the mitigation that was identified in the EIR is Specific Plan Policy VC-2, another term you'll probably hear a lot today, which specifically implements those mitigations. And what Specific Plan Policy VC-2 says is that projects that generate additional traffic, regardless of whether or not it triggers an actual SEQA impact, but if projects generate additional traffic, those projects should contribute toward the improvement of the two identified intersections, as I mentioned in the earlier slides. Since then, though, because the Specific Plan was written in 1998, some things have changed in that some of the roadways improvement, some of the roadway improvements in the Specific Plan have either been installed already, or they've been deemed infeasible. And since then, there's been additional or different substitute improvements identified in the City of Galita CIP. So I'll speak to those improvements as a, the best or most reasonable way that we can carry out the intent of a Specific Plan Policy VC-2 today. So because the exact improvements that are mentioned in Specific Plan Policy VC-2 have either been deemed infeasible or not currently in the Galita CIP, city staff has identified the following four CIP projects that we believe best address the two mitigations identified in that policy. And we've suggested, we've included in the CAR, suggested means- And we've suggested, we've included in the CAR, suggested means of complying with that policy VC2. So these four intersection improvements identified in the Galita CIP, this top one is the same project that was envisioned with mitigation measure 3.20-2, this Los Carneros Road 101, southbound ramp. And then the combination of these three, we believe best meet the intent of what was called for in mitigation measure 3.20-6. And I have a graphic here that shows those last three. Hollister Avenue, State Route 217, southbound and northbound ramps, which are proposed as roundabouts here, and then the Equill Street extension is shown here. The Fowler Road extension was one of those projects previously identified that was deemed inadvisable to construct, and so that's not considered in our calculation of what we believe the city of Santa Barbara might pay as our fair share contribution to these traffic So on March 29th, city of Galita submitted a technical memo prepared by Kim Lee Horn that proposes that the city of Santa Barbara's fair share contribution consider nine roadway improvements that are identified in the Galita CIP. Given that the fair share contribution is suggested as a means to comply with policy VC2, city of Santa Barbara staff include only those improvements that implement the mitigation sought by the EIR, and not all nine roadway improvements that are outlined in that memo. We do agree with much of what's in the memo, in terms of some conclusions regarding this project's trips, this project's PM peak hour trips, the existing trips on the street network today, and what would amount to as trip growth that this project would add to the existing And so, as outlined in your CAR, city of Santa Barbara staff are proposing this formula as our fair share calculation of what this project should contribute, or could contribute as a way of satisfying that Specific Plan Policy. And essentially, what it boils down to is, it's this project's share of future cumulative traffic in these intersections. And so in the table following, I have actual numbers to go with that. So P is the proportionate share that this project adds to the street network on these intersections. And again, here's the same four intersections and projects identified in the Galita CIP. So the first part, which is really the last part of the equation, is just taking the difference between the existing number of trips going through those intersections, and what the cumulative number of trips going through those intersections with the project included in that. And then, that's the denominator. The numerator is then the project trips that this actual project would send through that intersection to determine how much of all those future trips are caused by this project. So when we do that calculation, we come up with a percent, that's a proportionate share for this project to contribute to any improvement in the intersection. Then carrying that forward, after we have the proportionate share, we then would multiply that by the project cost. And we are proposing that while we would establish this fair share methodology today, or if the project is approved, that would be established today, we wouldn't know the actual dollar amount until a future point when a successful bid is awarded for these future intersection improvements. So carrying that forward, the proportionate share is listed here from the last chart. The project cost, as I mentioned, is to be determined, and so we don't know the actual dollar amount that would be called for, in terms of the city of Santa Barbara's fair share contribution to these improvements, but we would want in the record this determination of how a fair share would be calculated, once we do have that dollar figure. And then moving on to the land use entitlement that's required for this project, as I mentioned, it's a development plan. The standard for review of a development plan is compliance with the zoning ordinance, that a finding that the project is consistent with the principles of sound community planning, it's compatible with the neighborhood, and that it's consistent with the traffic management strategy for the city of Santa Barbara. The project itself has two zoning designations, both are Airport Industrial Zone designations that allow this proposed use. Also, for your information, in terms of compliance with the city's growth management plan, it is within the amount of square footage for this area. There was some previous demolition on the site, so there's quite a bit of demolition credit on the site. Some of that was sold to Direct Relief. There's a small amount of additional demolition proposed, and then we do need to allocate some square footage to equate to the total proposed square footage for the site. We need to allocate that from the airport vacant property allocation. So it is consistent with the city's growth management program. Also consistent with applicable general plan policies in the land use element, the environmental resources element, with specific plan policies as well, in terms of the vision of the specific plan, applicable policies regarding cultural resources and flooding and circulation. Project was reviewed by the ABR on February 29th of last year, and received generally favorable comments, was referred to planning commission, and they made the project compatibility analysis findings. They did ask for a few details to be further studied, and the project would need to return to ABR for final approval, following the final decision on the land use discretionary The city of Santa Barbara traffic management strategy mandates that for projects proposed in the airport area, that our traffic analysis be conducted using the city of Galita traffic model, which we did. And so, in conclusion, our staff's recommendation is that council consider the appeal and take an action to approve, continue, or deny the project, making the findings, necessary findings for any of those actions. We also, as I mentioned, recognize that we do not yet have an agreement between the two cities that is called for in that specific plan, and so we ask that council might consider directing staff to continue working with the city of Galita towards that agreement. We have been meeting, city staff have met several times, in an attempt to come to some agreement. We haven't been able to do that, though, prior to this hearing. We could certainly continue to work towards that. And that concludes staff's presentation. I do want to mention, John Campanella is here, representing the planning commission, if you have questions for him and their deliberation on this project. Also, several other staff here, Hazel Johns, Airport Director, Daniel Gollet, Supervising Transportation Planner here, and Andrew Vermont, Project Planner. If you have more detailed questions about the project itself, the traffic analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campanella, did you want to mention, or are you just here to answer questions? Answer questions? Okay. Thank you for being here. Any questions first from council, before we go to the appellate? No? Okay. So Ms. Green, or whomever is representing, you have up to 20 minutes. There's a mayor, hello?
Hello, Mayor.
There's a timeline right there, so you can see that.
Okay.
And thank you very much, and good evening, almost, so.
I almost said good afternoon, but it is good evening. Good evening, Council Mayor Snyder and council members. I'd like to, I'm Paula Perotti, Mayor for the city of Galita, and I'd like to acknowledge that with me today, we have Mayor Potem Kazidin, our city manager, Michelle Green, Deputy City Attorney, Winnie Kai, and several staff members that are here to answer questions, if you have any. I would like to start off by thanking you for this opportunity for Galita to present our appeal. I want to make it clear, perfectly clear, that our position is not to stop this project, but to ensure that the impacts in Galita are adequately addressed. Galita staff have been and continue to be willing to work with your staff to ensure that both public entities achieve their goals. On behalf of our Galita residents, we want to ensure that they won't be left paying for impacts to our roads and public safety services caused by your development. We can also place ourselves in your shoes, and see that development of 6100 Hollister would generate much-needed revenues, which would then be used to improve the quality of life in Santa Barbara. It is our goal to try to work out a mutually acceptable way to allow for your development of 6100 Hollister and any future projects. We want the spirit of collaboration and good faith to guide this conversation and set the tone for future conversations on future projects you want to develop. I think you would agree that our residents would appreciate us not spending taxpayer dollars in litigation against one another. I certainly hope we can get to an acceptable resolution of this appeal today, and we thank you for your thoughtful consideration on this matter. And now Winnie, our Deputy City Attorney, Winnie Kai, will give a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for hearing our appeal today. I want to provide a roadmap of my presentation. So first, I will be showing you some maps to kind of locate us, where this project is. Then I'm going to give a little bit of background from Galita's perspective, as to how this project came to us. And then I'll go over our two major appeal points. So our recommendation is that we ask that you either grant our appeal today, or in the alternative, continue this item, so that we can negotiate a resolution. As you can see on Slide 1, this is the map of the jurisdictional boundaries. City of Santa Barbara is in the green, and the yellow is city of Galita, and the little red box there is 6100 Hollister. As you can see, the south of the project is pretty much all airport. Therefore, you're really, the project is really surrounded by the city of Galita. So the second slide I want to get us situated with is the traffic impacts. This really shows where all the peak hour traffic is going to go. And this is Fairview, Fairview Street, Fairview Avenue, this is the intersection of Fairview and Hollister. This is the freeway interchange, Hollister. Some of it is in your jurisdiction, some of it is, most of it is in city of Galita's jurisdiction, as you get to other services. And this is Los Carneros Road, where there are some trips from the 6100 Hollister project as well, and the interchange. All of the roads that I just described are part of Galita's transportation impact, transportation improvement plan. We have a capital improvement program that goes to paying for improvements on all of these roads and intersections. And we also require development within our jurisdiction to pay for their proportional share of contribution to those roads and intersections. So now that we're situated geographically, I want to provide a bit of background from the Galita's perspective, how this project came to us. So as Ms. Brook mentioned, it was brought up to Galita at our ad hoc committee on airport development in February 2016. Airport staff introduced a project design, council member Bennett and city manager Michelle Green were very pleased with the design and expressed the comments about the attractiveness. At that meeting, Ms. Green asked, well, what's Santa Barbara's environmental process going to be? Because we'd like to talk about our traffic impacts in Galita, and how those would be addressed. The airport director, Ms. Hazel Johns, said she didn't know at that point, and that Santa Barbara would let Galita know. So there were some interactions with our public works staff, with your airport planning staff, about scoping and the traffic analysis, and this all happened in summer of 2016. And this occurred over the course of a few weeks, we participated in this traffic study, we're not disputing the traffic study itself. After this, we anticipated an opportunity to review a CEQA environmental document from your city, and an opportunity to submit conditions of approval, asking for traffic mitigation fees, when this project was ready for approval. We didn't know, the Santa Barbara staff recommended a CEQA exemption. We didn't hear about this project again, until the October Planning Commission hearing. So a few days before the October 2016 hearing, we received notice that Santa Barbara staff proposed the project approval. We immediately sent a letter requesting that the planning commission add conditions of approval, including payment of our traffic impact fees, park fees, certain improvements, and an agreement to be executed between Santa Barbara and Galita, in accordance with the Specific Plan and the EIR. Galita staff attended your planning commission hearing and verbally requested these conditions. Your planning commission approved the project, and didn't impose the conditions. Thereafter, we filed an appeal with you. And since January to about three weeks ago, Galita staff and your staff have met several times. We clarified our position on the CEQA challenge and the lack of payment of development impact fees, particularly the traffic impact fees. We are pleased to see that your staff has listened and attempted to address our issues. As stated in your staff report, in response to Galita's appeal, there is now an addendum to the 1997 EIR, and a proposed fair share calculation to pay Galita for traffic impacts. However, we do not believe the addendum and the proposed fair share calculation solves the problem. First, I'll talk about our CEQA issues. This project, in our opinion, does not meet CEQA standards. The EIR for this project was certified in 1997, and was both a CEQA and a NIPA document. The 20-year-old EIR cannot be relied upon now, because the baseline has changed significantly. The physical changes include incorporation of the city of Galita, Galita's adoption of its general plan, which had a different land use pattern than what was under the county that your EIR was based upon, the development of projects within Galita since 1997, substantial growth of UCSB, sea level rise issues, adoption of Santa Barbara County Eastern Galita Valley Community Plan, which will intensify growth and development, and very notably, there have been significant changes to the airport since 97, including the terminal expansion and the airport master plan. So changes in the law and the regulations have also occurred in the last 20 years. Now there's a greenhouse gas analysis requirement in every environmental document, new stormwater regulations, the Santa Barbara Air Pollution Control District has updated its clean air plan multiple times. There are now requirements regarding complete streets. And Appendix F of the CEQA guidelines now have requirements regarding energy and conservation. The addendum for this project, which purports to update the EIR baseline, is not sufficient. An addendum cannot be used to update the baseline of an EIR, because an EIR analyzes the build-out of the impacts of a specific plan. An addendum is just used to analyze the impacts of a specific project under the EIR. It cannot be used to save this 20-year-old EIR from its obsolescence. An updated environmental analysis with an updated baseline has the potential to render mitigation measures identified in the 97 EIR infeasible, as Ms. Brook mentioned. Some of them are infeasible, or they trigger new mitigation that was unforeseen 20 years ago. The impacts of the project anticipated for the Specific Plan area need to be reevaluated comprehensively, and not on an individual project basis. The environmental analysis needs to be consistent with the actual anticipated projects with today's physical and regulatory setting. Only by doing this, with the totality of impacts and realistic and feasible mitigation measures be implemented. Another problem with this addendum is, Galita staff and the public hasn't had time to fully review it. I know CEQA doesn't require us, require you, to, you know, put it out for a public comment period, but the purpose of CEQA is to provide the public and decision-makers with meaningful public disclosure on the environmental impacts of a project. We don't feel like we've had enough time to provide comment, and you haven't had enough information to make a decision. However, we have some significant, we have identified some significant inadequacies and have submitted them in our materials to you today. Further, it's not clear how these anticipated projects today, including 6100 Hollister and the auto dealership that's slated for the neighboring property, are related to the project list of the Specific Plan done in the late 90s. the project list of the specific plan done in the late '90s. The currently anticipated development, light industrial buildings, and the auto dealership seem vastly different than the grand business parks envisioned in the '90s. Santa Barbara staff's reason to us to use the 97 specific plan seems to be predicated only on the fact that the projects proposed now are less in square footage than the projects envisioned in the specific plan. However, that does not necessarily equate to fewer impacts or lower intensity of use. Other than that, there's very scant relationship between what's proposed to go in there now and what was envisioned in the, in the '90s. Lastly, we have some concerns with the process by which this addendum is being approved. Addendums have to be approved by the decision-making body, which was the Planning Commission. To the extent that this addendum has not been approved by the Planning Commission, we do not believe that you are following the procedures under CEQA. Next, I'm going to talk about the specific plan and EIR inconsistency. And we've talked a lot, Ms. Brook talked a lot about the VC-2, and this is the exact language. "In accordance with an agreement between the city and the county, each project that generates additional traffic shall contribute to the improvement of the circulation system in the surrounding county area." It is very clear that the specific plan explicitly references an agreement that existed at the time the specific plan was approved. Your staff has informed us this agreement was either not done or seems to be lost. Regardless of what it is, the specific plan envisioned an agreement to be in place when the specific plan was approved. Simply put, the specific plan required that there be a mutually agreed-upon mechanism for Santa Barbara to pay the neighboring entity, whether it's the county or Galita, for project impacts so that a situation like this would be avoided. Without an agreement for 6100 Hollister and all the projects that you plan on bringing forth under the specific plan, we would be here every single time. VC-2 must be read to require an agreement to be in place before our project is approved. Right now, there is no agreement. The staff report does not include a proposed fair share calculation that Galita has previously seen or agreed to. Your imposition of a fair share calculation on us now without consultation with and without agreement from Galita does not constitute an agreement under VC-2 or your EIR. The imposition of the proposed calculation on us also violates the spirit of cooperation that we as public entity neighbors should have. Our predecessor, the county, has actually had to take action against Santa Barbara in the past to get it to comply with the specific plan with this specific provision. Your staff report states on Page 8, "The city approved a 180,000 square foot project for office and retail space under the specific plan. This was called the Gateway Project in 2001. Santa Barbara did not include a mechanism to compensate the county, so the county appealed the project. And they settled by way of an MOU, which included $1.8 million in development impact fees. 1.3 were for traffic impacts." Your staff also did a supplemental EIR to the 97 EIR for the Gateway Project. The county commented on that because it said, "You're not paying us for our traffic impacts." Santa Barbara, in its actual response to comments, said, "In the interest of being a good neighbor, it is the city's intent that the proposed project implements its proportional share of traffic mitigation. Based on the formula of $4,564 for each of the 287 PM peak hour trips generated by the project, the project would be required to pay a total of $1,309,868." This is really the method by which we are asking the City of Santa Barbara to now pay. Peak hour trip based on a cost per trip. That's what we've presented to your staff. We are merely asking for the same thing. When we met with your staff in January, we gave them our GTIP calculation, which was based on the same analysis. And your staff told us that Santa Barbara could not pay this fee because of the fee would proportionally pay for an intersection not impacted by this project. This is because the GTIP fee, which is the peak hour versus, and trip fee, is based, it pays for capital improvements throughout the city that's necessitated by new development. The law allows local entities to charge one fee on one standard. It is an efficient way for local entities to be compensated for new impacts caused by development. Along the same idea, we're asking for our fire and sheriff fees because this project, when built, is going to draw upon our public safety resources. Essentially, we're here for the same reason as the county when they'd appealed the Gateway Project. Your staff stated that Galita couldn't pay the GTIP fee, but would consider a fair share contribution to only those intersections and roads impacted by the project. So we accommodated that concern. Oh, I forgot about this. This is the GTIP slide, but I'm going to move on to the fair share table. And it's a little technical.
You're at 3 and 1/2 minutes.
Okay, thank you. But it essentially is our fair, we took all the intersections listed in your traffic study for this project and used our traffic model to come up with the trips and the cost of construction and the percentage that was spelled out in the traffic study. So we were surprised, we provided all this information March 29, 2017, and we hadn't heard anything back from your staff. So we were surprised to see this report last Thursday evening that shows your fair share calculation, and we hadn't seen that calculation before. We want to highlight that this is not Galita's first time asking for GTIP fees. We've certainly worked with UCSB, the county. County has imposed our GTIP fee and fair share development, intersection development on their private development projects. One of them is called the Cavallotta Tree Farm. They're paying us our GTIP and building an intersection improvement. So furthermore, the city has initiated efforts to inform Santa Barbara of developments within our borders, you know, within 6300 Hollister that we, that houses the Marriott residence in. We initiated the contact with the City of Santa Barbara to let you guys know this development was happening within our jurisdiction, but that it would have some impacts on your city. We have some concerns with, some of the concerns with your fair share calculation is that the specific, your proposed calculation includes some of the intersections called out in the, in the specific plan and the EIR, but it doesn't include some of the other ones, including an extension of Kellogg Avenue and a half diamond interchange at State Routes 217 and even the Fairview-Hollister intersection. Probably some of these are infeasible, but it begs the question of what impacts were addressed by these mitigations and now are left unaddressed because the mitigations are no longer feasible. This is why we ask whether the specific plan and the EIR really formed the basis for approval of 6100 Hollister. All in all, Galita wants the impacts of 6100 Hollister to be addressed, and that is through a payment of traffic, fire, and sheriff fees. The biggest dollar amount is the traffic fees, and we're open to receiving a fair share or GTIP fee. Like I said earlier, Santa Barbara was prepared, was prepared to pay the GTIP fee in the Gateway and the Citrix Projects. Why won't Santa Barbara do the same now? In summary, we urge you to grant our appeal or continue this item. We want an agreement for this project and future projects to be addressed. We don't want this agreement to somehow slide by and we enter into an agreement for future projects as the staff recommendation is. We, we want every project to be dealt with. So otherwise, both cities will be arguing here time and time again. So we are grateful for your time and are available for any questions.
Thank you. I think Mr. Dominguez has a question for you.
Regarding the EIR, if I understood you correctly, you're saying we can't use it because it's from 1998?
Yes, and many physical and regulatory changes have occurred. So we don't believe that the analysis for the entire build-out is adequate anymore.
So does the statute provide for a hard date cutoff?
No, CEQA guidelines, CEQA guidelines require a harder look at any EIR that's older than five years old. So there are some standards, you know, change circumstances, does it change any of your mitigation measures? So a reliance on that would be, on EIRs older than five years would require more analysis from your staff.
Like an addendum?
No, I think it's the analysis of the CEQA guidelines to say whether or not, you know, it passes muster to actually use. So it's not in a, the decision to use an addendum is a different. Then you're looking at whether or not the, if you're going to use an older-than-five-year-old EIR, then you look at, does it need to be updated for any additional impacts or change circumstances? And there, you could decide it could be exempt, addendum, supplemental EIR.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have 13 seconds left. Councilmember Kazin, normally you'd be part of the appellate presentation, but if you'd like your two minutes here, you're welcome to have it at this point. So we'll go to public comment. Do we have any other public comment speaker slips? No, okay. So go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Kazin. I'm the mayor pro tem in City of Galita. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So first, let's recognize that it is a unique situation, what's happening here with the airport, because the airport is this enclave that's surrounded by the City of Galita. It's, there aren't cases like this in other, anywhere, really. It's not only that, but it, Hollister Avenue is the principal artery for the City of Galita. So it's impacting the, in essence, the core of the city. The other thing that's curious is because of the situation, the benefits of a project that go there go to the City of Santa Barbara. The costs go to the City of Galita. And that presents a sort of unique situation and hopefully rather compelling to consider how do we mitigate those costs? The idea that there's overriding considerations from the 1997 EIR that suggested that the benefits would be greater than the costs and hence the, those are overriding considerations for the significant impacts. Well, when the costs go to a different entity than are receiving the benefits, that sort of undermines that whole thing. But I guess the point is, is that right now, we're just, we're asking to reflect the fact that there are impacts to the City of Galita. I understand that staff is interested, that the staff of Santa Barbara are working, recognize that those costs should be mitigated, and the question that we're talking about is how best to do it, what's an appropriate mechanism to do it. City of Galita have offered two different approaches. One, the GTIP, one, the, a fair share, the type that we're using with, excuse me, UCSB. The approach that the staff, I gather, has offered for the, from the City of Santa Barbara has reflected a set of projects that they think are appropriate for us to implement in Galita. And I'd say, you know, I would think it's appropriate for the City of Galita Council and others to make decisions as far as what projects are appropriate really and what are not. And so with that in mind, I ask that you consider the, to stay it, continue this, and in good faith, we can continue our negotiations to come up with a resolution that's amenable to both jurisdictions.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay. Did you want any part of your 13 seconds left? You have everything that you need. Okay, thank you. So it's to the council. Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask Ms. Brook about the idea that, that the Planning Commission needs to approve the addendum. Is that something that we would like to address?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is another example of a change in process that we've used about the last year where the staff are not advocating one position or another. They've given you a recommendation that's three options, basically approve, deny, or approve with conditions. So Mr. Vincent and I will observe some separation of functions. I'll advise the council, but strictly speaking, I don't think that's necessary. I just wanted to mention that. So what the CEQA guidelines say is that the decision-maker, the decision-making body shall consider the addendum. Our appeals are de novo, meaning they are new in front of the city council. You are the decision-makers. You are the appropriate body to consider the addendum, in my opinion.
So this letter delivered today is so full of information, and I'm having trouble comparing it to what's in the staff report. Ms. Brook, did you, did you have response to, did you receive this today to the, the letter?
Madam Mayor and Council, I did receive this letter, I believe, at the same time as you. I have had not, I have not had time to go through it in detail and have responses for you. Specific questions here and there, we might be able to address, but not comprehensively, no, I haven't had a chance.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, if I might add also procedurally, your council procedures in Section 34 really give you two options. And I did have the opportunity to discuss these with the person I think is acting as Galita's interim city attorney, Mike Jenkins, last week when he called, and I advised him of these rules. His concern at that time was the Tuesday, the week before deadline, that your procedural rules have for submitting additional information. So you have two choices. You can receive and lodge Galita's information in the record, or you can continue this to give staff an opportunity to consider it and give yourselves an opportunity to consider it. It would not be realistic to expect either Santa Barbara staff or the council to respond meaningfully to what we receive today.
Okay, and so the, the recommendations, Mr. Kalan, is, well, to approve the plan and then continue talking with Galita. That's, that's item 1 and 2 under Section B?
The recommendations are to approve the plan, continue the item, or deny the project. In addition, under recommendation B1, if you take a look at Page 12 of the staff report, there's actually an additional recommendation from staff that council directs city staff to negotiate with the City of Galita towards an agreement regarding development impact fees for future projects at the airport. The way I read that, the staff has done its best job with this project to understand the fair share contribution for the improvements that were contemplated as they've changed since the specific plan in the late '90s. But there's a recognition that reaching the agreement Ms. Kai referred to would be a beneficial thing for all, all people concerned. So it's a, it's kind of a twofold recommendation. Mitigate now, based on what we know, and continue discussion to find a solution that would be acceptable to Galita long-term.
Madam Mayor, I think we really do need to come to an agreement with Galita for future issues, so I certainly support that part. But I'm happy to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question around the fair share calculation. How does that, there's, we have different fair share calculations between our staff and Galita city staff. Can we hear that, about that differentiation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the city staff's approach to the fair share contribution was as a means of implementing policy VC-2. The City of Galita's appeal letter focused on the fact that we, we did not address that policy in our actions at the Planning Commission. And so we went back and we looked at that policy. We looked at what it says the city should do. We looked at the, the current City of Galita CIP to find the most applicable projects that meet the same, that address the same issues as the policy of VC-2. And we proposed a proportionate fair share contribution using a formula that was presented to us by Galita's traffic analysis, their traffic engineers. And we, because they, we received that information, we did receive it on March 29th, City of Santa Barbara staff have not had a chance to evaluate the cost estimates in there. So we proposed the, the mitigation to be tied to the ultimate project cost, which would be set by a the, the mitigation to be tied to the ultimate project cost, which would be set by a bidding process, like any other public construction project. And that, you know, it would be, that's, that's the number ultimately. So there isn't any forecasting involved, or you don't have to worry about, you know, are our forecasts accurate today or not? It would be the actual cost when the project is let.
Okay, thank you. And then, so that's one area. And then another one is the gateway project. Had a fee, I'm, I'm going to just accept the, at least, here's, was what I heard, and then you can tell me whether I heard right, that there was a $1.3 million fee attached to the gateway project? And can we, how did that compare to, I mean, I know there are many variables in, in projects, but is that the case? I mean, and I'm sure there are numbers, that that number came from somewhere, but how does that compare to the project that's before us today?
Madam mayor, councilmember White, I have the memorandum of understanding from, from 2000 associated with that project. And it's fairly extensive. It includes contribution for affordable housing, a plan for landscaping Hollister Avenue. And it also identifies contributions for Equle Street extension, Fowler Street extension, Hollister and Los Carneros, and 101 Southbound ramp widening at Los Carneros. So some of those are consistent with those mitigation measures from 3.20-6, which addressed Hollister and Fairview. And the rest of what is in that MOU is presumably from negotiation with the county at the time.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
The, the agreement that we need to enter into with VC2 sounds pretty much like the way we've laid it out with this formula, that we'll analyze what's the percentage of traffic added and pay that amount into the system. So seems like we should push this project forward, because as, as the mayor indicated, this has nothing to do with the project itself, but paying a fair share. And if that's the fair share that most cities in our region and statewide use that type of formula, I think we're probably going to be pretty close to, to reaching an agreement. So I would support the recommendation to approve the project and adopt the findings, and then ask staff to work on this agreement with the city of Galena.
Okay, we'll take that as a motion then, in a second. Mr. Dominguez and Mr. Hachekis. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, one of the things I think is, is good about this project and the cooperation with the city of Galita is what we're building in relation to the airport. Both councilmember Kasdan and mayor Perotti mentioned that the benefits of this project come to the airport and to the city of Santa Barbara. And it's important to recognize that the airport is an enterprise fund within the city of Santa Barbara. And all the revenue that's generated at the airport stays on the airport and gets reinvested into the physical facilities at the airport. And that that is a regional facility that benefits the entire South Coast and is really a major economic foundation of the entire economy of the South Coast, including the university, the city of Galita, the city of Santa Barbara, city of Carpinteria. I mean, it's, it's the gateway for tourism. It's the gateway for business. It is, it's critical infrastructure for the whole region. And it just happens to be that, because of history and the funny line that goes out to Galita, that the city of Santa Barbara operates that facility. So it's, it is incumbent on us to cooperate together to figure out a way to make this work for both jurisdictions. And I think we can, and I know we will. And so I, I agree with the motion and think that moving ahead with this project to, to firm up the foundation of the airport's financing, to make sure that we are able to continue that regional facility is, is important for both jurisdictions. And that working together, collaboratively, to come up with a financing mechanism that fairly allocates those traffic impacts to the different jurisdictions is really the way to go. So I support the motion.
Mr. Hachekis?
Thank you, madam mayor. If I could ask the, the city of Galena, the formula that was presented, I, I'm not an expert in this area, but are you objecting to that, or do you think that that might work? I didn't quite, couldn't tell what you're thinking.
Yes, we are objecting to it. We really haven't had time to adequately assess that, that is, that are, the intersections listed in your fair share proposal are the intersections of impacted intersections. So what we propose as a fair share is, are the intersections called out in your traffic study that are impacted by this project?
That's not really where I was asking. I was just talking about the formula itself. So really what you've told me is, you haven't had a chance to really look at the formula, not so much where it's applied.
No, the formula is what it was put together in our technical memo, and so we are okay with the formula.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So if I understand it, sorry, is there more?
So, can, total, well, the formula, there, the actual little T, you know, the, the major formula is fine, but there are certain assumptions in the formula, like project cost, that we wouldn't agree with, because it's based on invoicing on a successful bid. And we had issue with that, because that's, the cost of a project is not just the cost of construction. It also includes design. It includes right-of-way acquisition. The cost of these two things can be significant. So we don't agree that the formula in its detail is correct.
Okay, so what it might include is the point of contention. Would that be part of our ongoing discussions?
Yes. Well, in terms of the ongoing discussions, we wanted an agreement to be in place before this project was approved. Otherwise, we'd have to resort to SEQA litigation in order to get the agreement and our traffic and sheriffs and fire impact fees.
Thank you.
Compensate it. Ms. Maria?
Thank you, madam mayor. I, I wanted to hear from the other staff person who stepped up. Did, or was the, did the information come out, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. I'm Rosemarie Gaglione. I'm the public works director. So mayor Schneider and council, yes, Winnie did answer the, answer the question, that, that the issue is not the formula in and of itself. It's the inputs into the formula and the number of projects that should actually be included in that table.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, madam mayor, I, you know, councilmember Kasdan's point is well taken, that our airport, sitting in the middle of their city, or in the middle of the county, when it was, when that action happened, that we grabbed that land, is so odd. And I'm always uncomfortable that, that I get the jurisdictional tensions there, based on this historical, the history of how we came to be, the city limits out there. So I just wanted to recognize that and, and say that I, I really believe Galita is our sister city, you know, like, and I'm uncomfortable that we're not in agreement on these things. But, and I have to reluctantly, though, vote for the, for the motion. I think our staff has, has done their, their homework. And I do look, I like that there's a part two of that, and that is that we will continue to work together to find agreement on these issues. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you. Just part of the history, as I remember it, the county didn't want the airport, so it wasn't exactly a grab. It was a
Oh, good, yeah, give us that, yeah.
Please, thank you, take it, at that point in time. So obviously, things change decade to decade, and jurisdictions change, new cities come up. I think Galita's been proven as a, as a formidable part of our Santa Barbara county. And I have full faith that our staffs will figure out whatever number will work. I know we're seemingly far apart today, but I also agree with mayor Perotti when he said we don't want the project to, to stop. We don't want to halt the project. And I think this is a formula, or whatever formula arrangement we can figure out, we can figure out and still get this project going. I, I also want to emphasize, I think Mr. Hart said it very well, that as an enterprise fund, this project is going back to the airport. And a strong airport makes for a strong region, both for the city of Santa Barbara, for the county, and for the city of Galita. That is what's keeping employment fees down. It's what's keeping the economic vitality of the airport up, and that helps all of us. It doesn't just help one city over another. So that, just to respond to that comment earlier. Mr. Colon, did you, you had your hand up there?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Just some practicalities. When I spoke with Mr. Jenkins, I reiterated an offer that we'd made earlier to Galita, that the city of Santa Barbara would agree to toll the very short 30-day SEQA statute of limitations, so long as Galita agreed not to try and enjoin the project. I made that offer knowing full well that because this is a question about money and not irreparable harm, like losing the pup fish or something like that, that they really have a very low likelihood of being able to, quote, "stop the project" when they go to court anyway. So that offer was out there. In addition, I want to point out just procedurally, that should Galita bring a lawsuit, the SEQA statute itself requires that the city of Santa Barbara notice a settlement, settlement meeting within 20 days. So the anticipating future conversation about how the airport's going to develop, makes a lot of sense in the context of the statute. I, I would hope that we can avoid litigation, but if we have it, we're going to be talking under the statute anyway.
Great. Okay. Mr. Hachekis, do you have something?
I just, I was going to ask Mr. Colon if he had comments, because he looked like he was about to explode there. So I'm glad he got a chance. But, and I'm sorry if I seemed abrupt. I can do that on occasion. But I appreciate your presentation. And I too agree that we are, what, hand-in-glove sister cities, as it were. And I do think that you would admit that while it's, it's in all our interests that the, the airport flourish, it's just a question of how we can help you. And I, I think that's what we're trying to do. We just haven't agreed yet quite how to do that, but I think we can work towards that. That's at least the spirit of which I think the council is speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
I was going to ask our city attorney for the comment that he made, so he made it before I could ask, but I would just follow up on that and say, I think we can figure out a pathway that's not something that involves lawyers. As much as I'm a lawyer, I think if we can toll this and, and put a reasonable amount of time to reach an agreement, we could probably work something out. Mayor Protem, Kasdan, you're, you're new to the council. You're recently elected, and you described it very eloquently. But a lot of cities have much more convoluted boundaries than that. In the central coast, our city boundaries are pretty clean and easy to, to work with one another. If you look at some maps in LA or the Bay Area, it's really hard to, to confine your impacts to your city and not be having to mitigate. So I think we can, we can make a pretty easy job of it, given our, our history of cooperation in the, in the past.
If I might, madam mayor, councilmember Dominguez, if you, if the council wished, you could add to your motion a third element, which would be an offer to Galita to toll the SEQA statute of limitations for a period of time that we would work out as staff.
I'd be happy to amend my motion.
So with the second, okay, that, took that thumbs up as a yes.
So I would, I would ask then if it
Yeah, okay.
I would ask then what a, if, if I may, if it's appropriate, ask the city of Galita what timeframe they would think would be reasonable.
That's a hard question for me to answer, because, just to give you a little history, we've offered up numbers and we haven't heard anything back from your staff. So we don't really know how far we are, to the extent that there's such a great sense of collaboration from this council. We're very appreciative of that. I would, I would suggest that you allow us, Mr. Colon and us, to sort of figure out a reasonable period. We'll be meeting in the short timeframe to talk about this issue and a tolling agreement for anywhere from, you know, 60 days to a few months, I think probably would be reasonable. But to pin down an exact number, I think is kind of difficult for us to, to do at the moment. But we do appreciate that you want to work things out with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll leave the motion open ended as to time at this point.
Okay. All right. So we know what the motion is? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much. And we have any council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Maria?
Thank you, madam mayor. As I said, I was with chief Luno this morning at the Santa Barbara Teen Coalition meeting. And that was convened by city teen programs. And I give Susan Young a lot of credit for keeping that effort going. The chief was introduced to all the youth-serving organizations. And we also had a discussion about addressing issues related to immigrant families in these political times. The Santa Barbara Youth Council itself met yesterday, talked about fundraising and making a budget request to the city council. So be ready for that. They're also engaged with Earth Day activities and tobacco prevention projects. I attended the Bioners Film Festival a couple of days ago. The topic was climate change response and ocean farming, which is terribly interesting, if none of you have ever thought about that. They grow kelp and other things in the ocean. I congratulate Sharon Hoshida and Greg Freeland for being honored for lifetime achievement at the CAWS Annual Dinner recently. The Sister Cities Puerto Vallarta group, they had a great presenter last week. It was councilmember Bendy White. And he was talking about water issues. Oh, but then they peppered you with all kinds of other questions. I, yeah. Maybe you'll talk about that more, but I try to go to all their meetings. Really, really wonderful. The Housing Authority Commission meeting had some unfortunate news. Garden on Hope did not get their tax credit benefit. And so they're going to try again in the next cycle. And that's too bad. That was our, some senior housing, but those guys never give up at the Housing Authority. So they're going to go for it again. I'm on the WEVE Advisory Council Women's Economic Ventures, and they have a program that will help small businesses expand. They do really excellent work, madam mayor. Thank you so much.
Mr. White?
Thank you, madam mayor. Well, to follow up Ms. Maria's comments, yes, I did present the Sister Cities Puerto Vallarta group, which is a, a, it's quite a tribe. There were some 30, 40, 40-plus people there, and they are, they are really an extended family. They, they obviously have a great time and, and also do good work by taking trips to Puerto Vallarta. Gil Garcia is, of course, involved there. They end up actually doing, building things down there. And they just, it's really a wonderful, wonderful group. And I also, as, as your CCRB representative, I, I met with a subcommittee of Carpinteria Water District folks last, yesterday afternoon. It's an encouraging move, where Carpinteria stepped away from participating in CCRB a couple of years ago. And they really are missed there. And I'm hoping that as we are now in the, really in full fray of advocating for our, for the South Coast water rights, we really need to have full representation there. And so Carpinteria at least is willing to, to have a meeting with, with me, the, the chair of CCRB, and start the conversation about getting back together. So I hope that that ends up with a, a reunification of Carpinteria and the CCRB someday soon.
Okay. And I think we need to go back to, if you can read item 20, do we need to read it again? Or just go back to item 23, which is the closed session, no, sorry, not 23. It was 21, the Real Property Negotiators, which we already put into the record. And we will adjourn from that closed session. Thank you very much.